Good morning. My name is Glenn Schwartzback. I'm one of the negotiators for ALP. And unfortunately, I found it necessary to take time out of my busy work schedule to come down here and talk with you about the negotiating team's lack of communication with us lately on a number of items. As you are aware, we've been negotiating an MOU with the city. They've been difficult negotiations, but we've been pretty successful to date. We've negotiated about forty of forty-eight provisions with the city. We recently had a difficult negotiating session on February 20th, and the city left that meeting without scheduling another negotiating session with us. A few days later, we got a note from the attorney representing the city asking us to hold the date this Wednesday for mediation. A few days later, we submitted two proposals to the city, two proposed tentative agreements. They were tentative agreements, proposals that we had been working on prior to receiving the request for mediation. It included a cover letter. The following day, which would have been, I think it was February 26th, on Tuesday, we submitted a letter that responded to the city's request for mediation. And we have yet to get a response to any of those things. The letters included an indication that asking the city to clarify whether it was declaring impasse with us, stated that ALP believed that we could still reach agreement on the eight outstanding provisions, stated that we believe mediation was premature, and that we shouldn't use the state's mediation resources until we absolutely exhausted all attempts to reach agreement on the eight provisions. We requested one or two more meetings with the city before mediation, and we proposed that if we couldn't reach agreement on some of the provisions, that we prepare a joint statement for the mediator so that we could have a better chance of having effective mediation when we do get to that point of meeting. Again, we haven't received any response to that. We followed up yesterday.
Sorry, your time is up. Vera Todoroff.
We think that after having an offer for two tentative agreements, one which includes things that we can agree on, the other which distills the eight issues that we are still under negotiation with, most of which, by the way, we've agreed to most of the language. There are just some fine points that need to still be negotiated, and granted, they're difficult. They include retiree health care and some other issues that are clearly very difficult issues and very broad-ranging issues. But we deserve a response. We deserve to know what the city is doing, what they think of our proposal and everything. And we have not declared impasse. If impasse was ever declared, and frankly, my notes say it never was, you have broken impasse. You've moved on through negotiations for months now. We've passed tentative agreements back and forth. We have passed proposals back and forth. We even signed a TA during that time. ALP deserves an MOA, a full MOA. We've been operating now for over a few years with a term sheet. The city came into these negotiations wanting only a term sheet again, or entitled by law to an MOU that takes longer to negotiate than just a few terms. Stick with it, and please tell your negotiating team to go back to the table. Thank you.
That concludes the public comment. We're going to go into closed session. We will return here at 1:30. 2013. We'll start with an invocation. Councilmember Liccardo will introduce our invicator.
Thank you, Sam, and thank you for your support of Recovery Cafe and our work next door. I think we have the honor of being the closest faith community to City Hall, so I hope we'll be a spiritual resource to City Hall as well, and that you'll feel free to use our sanctuary for prayer if need be, and that we can be a spiritual support to our community in that way. I just want to use our invocation time here this morning to just read a quote from one of my heroes, Greg Boyle, who's a priest in Southern California and founder of a work that's similar to the kind of work we're trying to do. His work is called Homeboy Industries. And let me read what Father Greg has to say about what he's about, and I think it speaks, if you want to know a little bit of what we're about, to what we're about. He said, "Here is what we seek: a compassion that can stand in awe at what the poor have to carry, rather than stand in judgment of how they carry it." So with that thought, I just want to invite us to pray together. Oh, God of compassion, we pray today for the people in our community who live in encampments. We hold their faces and their stories in this moment in our awareness prayerfully, so that we might have the wisdom to respond to our city's situation, not only compassionately, but effectively. Open not only our hearts and minds, but our wallets, in ways that prove that we do what Father Boyle has said, that we stand in awe at what the poor have to carry. This we pray in gratitude for the amazing opportunity that we all have been given to be good news to the poor. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. We will now have the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, our nation under God, indivisible, with every dignity and justice for all.
First item to consider, the orders of the day. Are there any changes to the printed agenda that we need to consider? I see none. Need a motion? Yeah, need a motion? I've got a motion. The motion is to approve orders of the day. On the motion, all in favor? Opposed? None opposed? Orders are approved. Closed session report, city attorney?
There is no closed session report.
Ceremony items would be next. I'd like to invite Councilmember Campos and Forrest Williams, President of Santa Clara Valley Science and Engineering Fair Association, to join me at the podium.
The Synopses Silicon Valley Science and Technology Championship will be hosting the 53rd Annual Championship at the San Jose Convention Center. This annual Synopses Championship showcases students throughout Santa Clara County become our future scientists, engineers, and mathematicians. And throughout the annual fair competition, students are challenged to go beyond their classroom studies. In other words, this is a bunch of extra work for them, but they like it. They work independently, learn to address questions in various fields of sciences. Winners of the Synopses Championship go on to compete and win in other state and national competitions, including prestigious Intel International Science and Engineering Fair. The event also directs public attention toward the fields of science and engineering by setting aside time for creative participation on part of all interested students. So we're going to declare the week of March 11/15 as Science Fair Week in the city of San Jose. Former Councilmember Williams, the scientist himself, is going to tell us about it.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the mayor and the city council for the proclamation. Just to give you some statistics of the particular fair this year is that we have over 876 projects, which totals about 1,110 students. We have about equal distribution between male and female, which is something that we're excited about. There's a 54% male and about 47% female. So that's encouraging as we look to the future. We have over 200 teachers involved. We have over 500 judges involved. So it is a serious matter. We're very committed to making sure that our children, your children, explore and determine and be excited about science and engineering. It is said that politically, we cannot really solve problems; we can make problems. And therefore, we need the intellectual capability of engineering and scientists to solve those problems. So we're in the solving mode. We thank you for all of the support. We will be getting back to you later on to let you know how our students perform. We are noted for excellence in terms of the commitment. As you know, San Jose is known for its intellectual prowess. It is known for having more patents generated here than anywhere in the country. So it is an integrity. It is a legacy that we must uphold. So we thank you again, and we look forward to you coming to the fair. It's all of the council members to come tomorrow afternoon between 2:00 and 4:00 to actually touch and see the students, see the projects, enjoy them, see what motivates them. Again, thank you for the proclamation, and we will fulfill our obligation to our students. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Forrest, since you worked on this. Appreciate it. Let's back up and get a photo here with Forrest. You're welcome. Put you in the middle?
There you go.
Okay, well, this guy can.
Oh, right here.
He's got a big one.
There we go.
He's going to be on the news.
Oh, it is. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Thank you again.
Next item is the report of the city manager, item 3.1. Oops, I'm sorry, I skipped ahead of the consent calendar, but I'll take the city manager report first anyway.
Well, thank you, Mayor. You threw me a curve there. I do have a few items to report on today. First of all, as a reminder, as has been noted many times yesterday, the new San Jose minimum wage ordinance did take effect. The initiative approved by San Jose voters last November has now raised the minimum wage in our city to $10 an hour, a $2 increase over the California minimum wage. Over the past several months, staff has worked with news media, with business, labor, and education organizations to inform both employers and employees about the new wage and law. The new law applies to most San Jose employers and to some outside the city limits as well. Employers that maintain a facility in San Jose or are subject to the San Jose Business Tax are required to comply with the ordinance. Employees who perform at least two hours or more of work per week in San Jose, even if their employers are based outside of the city limits, are also covered by the minimum wage ordinance. We have set up a website with information, bulletins, and frequently asked questions at the city's website, sanjoseca.gov/minimumwage. Over the coming months, we will be monitoring the level of effort needed to administer the new law and to investigate complaints, and we will include any additional resource requests in our proposed budget as needed. The next is about the San Jose Vietnam War Memorial, where we have a photo that has been put up on the screen. The long-awaited Vietnam Memorial will be dedicated at a public ceremony on Saturday, March 30th, at noon. The memorial will be engraved with the names of the 142 Sons of San Jose who gave the ultimate sacrifice in the Vietnam War. The location is at Confluence Point on West Santa Clara Street, just east of the HP Pavilion. The San Jose Vietnam War Memorial Foundation launched the memorial project in 2008. Many San Jose and Silicon Valley companies have donated their time and materials to create the memorial, led by Tennis Sketter Construction, which is serving as a general contractor on the project. The Sons of San Jose Memorial does draw its inspiration from the Vietnam Memorial in Washington, DC. It will be built of black granite, and will have two side panels listing the names of the fallen soldiers from San Jose. In addition to becoming a visible tribute to the sacrifice made by those who fought and died, and the five service members who are still missing in action, the memorial will provide family members and fellow veterans with an appropriate site for contemplation and remembrance. And so on behalf of our community, I commend and thank, in particular, Dennis Fernandez, a former Parks and Recreation employee many, many years ago, for leading this effort to realization, as well as all of those who contributed to the project. And so for more information, please visit sjwarmemorial.com. And finally, just a quick word of thanks to all of our city staff who helped plan and carry out the moving tribute to the fallen Santa Cruz police officers last week at HP Pavilion. I deeply appreciate the level of effort in a short amount of time to produce a complex event like this. In particular, I'd like to thank Acting Police Chief Larry Esquivel and his staff, and especially Acting Deputy Chief Jeff Morosick, as well as all of the officers who participated to make sure that the memorial was thoughtfully and successfully conducted. In addition, I appreciate the work from staff in the Department of Transportation and the city manager's office for their roles to manage traffic and to record the event for replay on Civic Center Television. Chief Esquivel and I have been in touch with the city manager and the police chief of Santa Cruz, and they are deeply, deeply grateful for all that San Jose did to support them in their time of need. And so on behalf of the residents in both our city and the city of Santa Cruz, thank you, staff, all for a job well done under very difficult circumstances. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, city major. Now we'll go to the consent calendar. Councilmember Herrera.
I'd like to pull 2.7.
I have some requests to speak on the consent calendar. We'll get to those in a minute. Councilmember Chu.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 2.3.
Those items will be pulled. Anybody from the public wants to speak on other items on the consent calendar? Mr. Wall.
Sir, on item 2.2, ordinance number 29212, people at home should know that you're amending the municipal code to permanently suspend or to expand the suspension program for the collection of a portion of construction taxes on downtown high-rise developments. I think people at home should know that you're giving away the store to build these high-density living projects or other high-rise structures, in which they really have no say whatsoever on how the city is being the land use issues, except by who they elect. And then, all of a sudden, we have these high-density living projects that most people do not want. They're basically blight, blight because of lack of parking. I know in my neighborhood, I have two of these structures. I'd rather have the old railroad tracks with the vagrant encampments burning down palm trees than these things in my neighborhood. Streets are impacted, congestion, for what? You permanently give these developers breaks, not having enough car parks in these structures. You defer their parks fees to expand parks throughout the city. So who actually benefits from this? I certainly get no benefit from it. I don't think the people at home in regular, single-family homes get any benefit from it. And then there's the issue of partial taxes that you're all going to be banging the drum on, which taxes you want to incur upon single-family homes, with reference to the parcels taxes that the high-density living places pay. No, I think this giveaway program should stop. I'm very much opposed to it. And I'm just talking about it just to make sure people at home understand that when you say you have no money for police officers or firefighters, you have money. You're giving it away. And I oppose it. Thank you.
That concludes the public comment on the consent calendar. So we have, I need a motion, except items 2.3 has been pulled. So is there a motion on the balance? And 2.7, I'm sorry.
Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion on the balance, want to register a no vote for 2.2A, the expansion of the suspension of construction taxes for the high-rise developments.
Okay, I need a motion. A motion to approve the balance that leaves 2.3 and 2.7 for us to discuss in a minute, noting the no vote from Councilmember Colra. On the motion, all in favor? Opposed? All in favor except for the no vote.
Just on 2.2A.
On the one item.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you.
All right. That takes us to item 2.3. Councilmember Chu, you want to pull that?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to address the item G3 on the February 20th Rules Committee Minutes Regarding to a Resolution to Support the Food and Drug Administration's Regulation on Methal and Flavored Tobacco Product. As you may know, in June 2009, Congress passed H.R. 1256, Family Smoking Prevention and Tobacco Control Act, banning flavored cigarettes but exempted methal from the ban. The FDA recently was ordered to study the effect of methal cigarettes and make recommendation for regulation. FDA have not made official recommendation yet, which is why it is critical that we submit a resolution before June of this year. This resolution was drafted by Technical Assistance Legal Center, or TALC, which is part of the Public Health Law and Policy Group, which is a national, nonpartisan, nonprofit creating policy innovations for the common good. The TALC provided a model resolution, completed with citations, that can be tailored to individual municipalities. In this case, the model resolution was used as a template for the city of San Francisco and many Bay Area cities. I would like to see that our city, city of San Jose, join other cities in Santa Clara County in passing a resolution before May 31st, coinciding with the World Tobacco Free Day, a day that raises awareness about tobacco use, prevention, and treatment. Better regulation and consideration to banning methal candy and fruit-flavored tobacco product is needed to steer away from targeting our future generations and preventing chronic illness. With many state-elected official, Bay Area cities and counties have already submitted their resolutions, so at this time, I would like to make a motion to agendize adopting a resolution to support the FDA's regulation of methal and flavored tobacco product for the next council meeting.
All right, you have a motion to agendize for the next council meeting. I'd like to have a little more time, because I'd like for our staff to get us a little more informed. You said that May 31st was, so it seems like we have some time. I'd at least like to have our Washington staff tell us what the status is of the FDA's work, because I know they were directed by Congress to do the work and bring back recommendations. I'd like to know where they are in the drafting process. Rather than just adopt a sort of a general resolution, we might be more specific if we have a little more time. And I think a week is probably not enough time to do that, but I would, I guess, defer to staff to tell us how much time they might need to figure out where we are. And I don't see that staff here that might know the answer. Betsy's here, so maybe Betsy can figure out if we've prepared in a week to, the staff could be able to inform us of the status of this, because it is a little bit confusing since the FDA has already been directed to do something that they haven't done yet.
Thank you, Mayor. Betsy Shotwell, Director of Intergovernmental Relations. If I could have more than one week, I would appreciate it, and with the deadlines to turn around, information for the next council are probably 24 hours from now, if I might have some extra time to flush out the issue.
So two weeks or three weeks gives you enough time to, you can get the answer, but getting it out in the public format with memos and information to council is what takes the time.
An internal review.
Okay. Councilmember Colra.
Thank you, Mayor. And I certainly, if the maker, I'll allow the maker to suggest any other date, and I don't object to allowing a little more time for Betsy certainly to do her part in connecting with the folks in DC. And I know when we first brought this up, I got a little bit of feedback from folks as to why we're targeting menthol, and the reality is that the tobacco industry actually lobbied very hard to prevent menthol and some of the other flavored tobaccos from being included in the general ban on flavored tobacco that certainly targets minorities as well as young people and tries to hook them at a very young age. And so I just mentioned that, that this is part, what this memo does really is support the FDA, what's been the longstanding position of the FDA, and it's an effort to support the FDA to help give some political support when we know that tobacco industry is going to come again with their lobbyists to try to push back on it. And so that's part of the reason why we brought this forward, is for the city of San Jose to stand up on the side of public health and our residents, rather than with tobacco companies.
I have some requests to speak on this item. I'll take your testimony now. Jeff Moore, followed by Dennis Acha.
Good afternoon, Mayor and city council. My name is Dennis Acha. I'm from Breathe, California, the Bay Area. I'm here to ask you to support the FDA to better regulate menthol cigarettes. As Mr. Colra mentioned, the tobacco industry did lobby against regulating menthol cigarettes because that is one of their main ways to reach out to special populations, vulnerable populations. Of course, they didn't want that one to be included in the list, but we do know that flavored cigarettes were regulated in 2009. It's absolutely imperative that we continue to reduce the influences of smoking, especially when youth and special populations are being targeted directly by menthol cigarettes. So as a result, I urge the council to place this item on the consent calendar. Thank you very much.
Jeff Moore, followed by Betsy Ann Cortez, or Paty Ann Cortez.
Hello, my name is Paty Ann Cortez. I am a proud member of District 7 and a current student at San Jose State University, and I am here to urge you all to move this on to the consent calendar. Menthol-flavored tobacco products, as we know, are starter products for individuals, mainly youth, young adults, African-American populations, API populations, people that we commonly see around in San Jose, being as diverse as we are. So the smooth taste makes it easier, more leni on the throat, better to integrate ourselves into the smoking lifestyle, and by that time, it doesn't matter what flavor we have. All that matters is that we are addicted and that we need the nicotine substance to have it, by which point it does not matter, therefore integrating us into the smoking culture. So it's about time to realize that aesthetics, the aesthetically pleasing products that we have are not just there in our local liquor stores and grocery markets to just sit there and look nice. It is there to attract young people and other targeted communities to buy them. And it's time to be like Milpitas, our neighboring cities, to be part of this healthcare initiative that's been overlooked since 2009, and we need to regulate these menthol tobacco products because the reality is, if we do not stop, we don't have to... not stop, we don't have to stop, and we do not have to implement the costs of healthcare to actually get them to stop smoking. So, and obviously the repercussions that come with smoking, such as cardiovascular diseases, cancer, and all of the above. So I really urge you guys to at least consider this and hopefully move this on to the consent calendar. Thank you very much.
Jason Wilson?
Good afternoon, Councilmembers. My name is Jason Wilson. I'm a student at San Jose State. I'm a political science major. I came here to speak on this behalf as a smoker that's actually trying to quit, actually having experience working with youth. I actually urge and support a resolution that's adapted to actually be, to regulate menthol and flavored tobacco. Please move to the consent calendar. I'm passionate about this. Like I said, I talked to a couple of nurses and everything. I'm trying to deal with my own issues, trying to quit smoking as a role model as a student that I see younger kids out every day purchasing tobacco. They're going to get it somewhere, but it's other counties in the Bay Area that this resolution has already been passed. And as San Jose, one of the biggest cities in California, I feel like this is an issue that needs to be addressed. So thank you for your time and consideration.
Jeff Moore, and then David Wall.
Hello, my name is Councilmembers. My name is Jeff Moore, President, San Jose Silicon Valley, NAACP. I live in the District Number Two. This is a worthy agenda item to be moved to consent calendar because I want my city to take a stance like Milpitas against manipulative tobacco industry, marketing toward vulnerable communities of color. Menthol helps the addiction to nicotine even greater. Sweet-flavored and trendy packaging attract young, first-time users to keep heavy users from ever quitting. The Act gives the FDA authority to set standards for new tobacco products and those marked as having reduced risks. More importantly, the Act directs the FDA to use a public health, population health standard when regulating tobacco products. Councilman Herrera, Councilman Campus, Vice Mayor Nguyen, Councilman Campos, Councilman Chu, and Councilman Coler, this will directly affect your neighborhood because these menthol cigarettes will show up, the ads will show up, and they'll be trying to draw youth of color to these tobacco things to get them hooked so have the new generation, the next generation of smokers. Please take a stance in the resolution, join the City of Milpitas to stop this spread of tobacco use and that we can contain the spread of cancer of our youth at a young age. Thank you.
David Wall?
I am going to speak on basically all the rules in Open Government Committee reports that are on the agenda. They have one specific flavor on the public record. The vagrant encampment behind Columbus Park colloquially known as Camp Chuck Sam. You folks, with the exception of our honorable attorney who has just returned from the wilds of Africa, have had plenty enough time to clean up this vagrant encampment. You actually allowed the establishment of this encampment through an outside government agency. Throughout today's soiree today, we are going to see the manipulation of vagrancy into becoming the foundational aspects of an entitlement program to permanently house vagrants in the City of San Jose.
Mr. Wall, this is about the minutes?
This is in the minutes, sir. It's on the public record, sir. You can call up any one of them.
We're going to have an agenda item later.
I understand that, sir. Very much, sir.
Stick to the minutes.
That is the minutes, sir, because the minutes are my writings under the public record. Now, if I could continue unabatedly, why don't you call up the public record so you can see it yourself, sir? Because I don't want you to be thinking that I'm taking abusive process here. How many memos have I written? How many speeches did I give during the Rules and Open Government Committee concerning this vagrant encampment that was allowed to exist for manipulative purposes, sir, that we will see today in your budget message and Councilmember Licardo's issue? So with that, I think people at home, especially within all our firehouses and police, that the police station, should know that this is a contrivance, a manipulative contrivance that was also at another Rules Committee meeting, Mr. Mayor, and what you wanted to create a bond measure for homeless activities because the redevelopment agency is destroyed. Thank you.
That concludes the public testimony on item 2.3, which is approval of council committee reports. The discussion has been about item D, which is the Rules and Open Government Committee report of February 20th, 2013, but we do need a motion that deals with all of the ones that are agendized. Councilmember Chu?
I believe we do have a motion.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
We're talking about, mostly about 2.3D, but I want to remind everybody that we've got all these others that we need to deal with as well. Well, I think we have a motion by Councilmember Chu on 2.3D.
Correct.
Okay.
And second by Councilmember Coler. Quick question for the city attorney. If we put it out to, say, April the 9th, would that give you enough time to review the languages?
Oh, yes.
All right.
That would work.
Thank you. So if it's okay with the segment, we'd like to maybe move to the April 9th agenda. Would that be okay? That should give vaccine enough time?
Okay, so that's an amended motion to agendize this item for April 9th.
Thank you.
And so the motion is to approve the minutes and agenda this item for the 9th.
Correct. Thank you.
And then we'll have another motion on the other minutes, so let's just deal with this one first. Councilmember Camus?
Yeah, I'm just fearful that we're trying to ban everything. I don't want us to, if we want to regulate something, I'm okay with it, but if we're trying to ban, you know, anything that anybody has an issue with, you know, we're going to become a nanny state here. And I, you know, just look at New York, their soda ordinance got struck down, and I think it's really, there's a lot of people in my culture that likes smoking flavored tobacco, and you know, it's a cultural thing, and you're going to tell them that they can't practice their own culture, make it illegal, when we have marijuana being, becoming deregulated. I think it's kind of weird that we're saying that, okay, we want marijuana, but we do not want menthol, you know, tobacco. So I don't want to make things illegal. If you want to regulate something, I'm okay with regulation, but making something outright illegal because we don't approve of it, I think is a path that I don't, I hope that we don't go down.
Councilmember Oliverio?
City Attorney, do we as a city have the right to regulate or ban menthol cigarettes?
No, I'd have to look at that specifically, but my sense is that this is a federal preemption. It really is properly with the FDA and that they have purview over regulation of cigarettes. And so, you know, we have a right to restrict how sales can be made in terms of being behind locked cases and things of that sort, but we don't have the ability to ban them outright.
And then when the FDA proposes regulations, I think it's called the Federal Register, where people will then put their input into that, do we normally comment on the Federal Register for FDA regulations?
Typically, we don't unless it's an item where the city council wants to chime in and take a position. So that would be, you know, part of the process.
And then does a city have a right to ban a hookah lounge? It's, I don't know if that's a correct terminology. I know we have one on South First Street. This is where people will smoke tobacco products that are flavored.
I think to the extent that there are state laws that deal with smoking in public places and there are city laws with respect to health and safety, we can regulate, but we can't outright ban them.
Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion on item 2.3D. Councilmember Chu, motion on that motion, all in favor. Opposed? Count 1, 2 opposed. Camus and Oliverio opposed, so the motion passes. It'll be on the April 9th agenda. All right, the rest of the council committee reports, A through H. Motion to approve the balance. On that motion, all in favor. Opposed? None opposed. That's approved. Other item we pulled off a consent is 2.7, Councilmember Herrera, Foreign Trade Zone.
Thank you, Mayor, and I just pulled this item off to highlight it because I think it's important to note that this is one of the few economic development tools we have left in the toolbox here and that it does help attract, among other companies, manufacturing companies. And that's important because manufacturing companies provide jobs, and some of them pretty high-paying jobs for residents, and I'm concerned that we still have an unacceptable, unacceptably high unemployment rate, especially in San Jose, and we need more jobs. So this is one of those items that does that. We already have the trade zone site framework application in place for San Jose, but what this does is expand it, and I think it's good because it, a lot of our companies have companies in other cities around the region, and so this will allow them to benefit from being able to get speedy, move through the process in a more speedy fashion. It also will reduce, actually saves them money in terms of tariffs. Some companies, and there's a whole list of different kinds of savings that companies can get, but I'll just say that this is real money, and there have been companies that have saved up to $1 million for utilizing this particular situation. So they sometimes will have component parts coming in, they may have a tariff delayed or actually never have to pay the tariff on those goods, especially when they're manufacturing in San Jose. So I think it's, I think it's really great, and I just want to thank our staff, Kim Wallace, Joe Hedges, Nancy Klein, for the work on this. And I don't know if Kim wanted to add anything in terms of benefits, so we, the main thing is we want to let more companies know about this because it is a benefit to manufacturers. And so we want to make sure that companies around the area, around the region, know that we have this in place and that they can save money by locating in a federal, in a trade zone, international trade zone area. With that, I'd like, I move approval of the item.
Motion to approve item 2.7. On that motion, all in favor. Opposed? None opposed. Motion is approved. We already had the report of the city manager, so we'll move now to item 3.3, adoption of a statement of policy on city council questions related to the Director of Human Resources.
Here to respond to questions. I think the council has adopted many of these in the past, so.
We have a motion to approve the item as recommended. On the motion, all in favor. Opposed? None opposed. Motion carries. We'll take up item 3.4, the fiscal year 2013-14 mayor's March budget message. This is a hearing on the budget message. We are not taking action today on the budget message. That is set for March 26th at the council meeting. Following the approval of the budget message in March 26th, the manager will spend a few weeks putting together a proposed budget based on the direction contained in the budget message. She'll deliver that to us and publish it for the public on or about May 1st. We'll spend most of the month of May having study sessions and dealing with the budget, and then there'll be action in June, which I'll do a June budget message, giving final direction on the budget. So it's a long process. We'll have many community meetings along the way, at least one in every council district as we look at some of the details of the budget. But today is just a hearing on the budget message, a chance for the council to review and discuss it. I'm certainly able to answer questions, but really this is an opportunity to public comment if they, if they care to do that today. Two years ago, when we were sitting here contemplating the budget message, we were looking at a gap in our general fund of $115 million. That would have been enough to push us into service-level insolvency. So facing a disaster, the council took some bold fiscal actions, which included 10% cuts in total compensation for all city employees, including all of those sitting up here at the DAAS, outsourcing work. We did pension, healthcare reforms, went to the ballot with Measure B. We reduced staffing significantly, and this has been a very tough and difficult two years, and especially difficult and painful for our employees, all of whom took a 10% pay cut. But it's now possible for the second year in a row to avoid layoffs and to begin to restore some services for the second straight year. We're looking at a fiscal year in 2013 and 14 as outlined in my message, where we can avoid cutting services for the second year in a row, increase some services in critical areas, and begin to restore some pay to help retain our most experienced employees. But it's pretty clear there's not nearly enough funding available to restore the full 10% pay cuts, and we have to be cautious with the limited amount of money that we have, ensure that we're spending in ways that won't add to future deficits. We also need to worry about the future, carry over enough funding to address the projected shortfall in the following fiscal year until we realize more of the savings from our pension reforms. But with the limited funds that we have to spend, and we do have some to spend, which is quite a switch from two years ago, our priority has to be public safety. We need to recruit, hire, and train new officers more quickly by expanding academy and hiring ahead for our police department. We need to move more police officers back on the street through civilianization and use of reserve officers. We'll finally be able to open the new South San Jose Police Substation, which the voters funded through a tax and a bond measure 10 years ago. We have to continue funding for some Safer Grant, that's a federal grant, for 49 firefighter positions. That grant has run out, and we need to keep those firefighters on, so we will continue to fund that. And then we'll have some targeted pay increases to help retain our veteran officers and other hard-to-fill and retain positions. What we don't have is a lot of extra money, even though we do have some one-time money that we will be able to use. We have $20 million in question and ongoing litigation that will probably be decided in June. We've got a nearly $14 million shortfall the following year. And if you look through my budget message, it's somewhere between $10 and $20 million of funding, depending on what the council wants to approve, for other items in the message, which includes $5 million of items we funded with one-time funds last year. So that gives us potential uses for our one-time funds of somewhere between $40 and $50 million, and that's much more than the one-time funds we have available. So we will be having the usual budget discussions, what are the priorities, what do we do with the funds that we have, and we invite everybody to engage in that process, to participate in the community budget meetings, and then to weigh in on the discussion along the way as we're talking about the specific items that we want to fund. And of course, we'll continue to talk about that for months, but it's important for people to be engaged in the process. This is just one step, one opportunity, and what I'd like to do is to take public testimony so that people who are here can speak, and then we'll see if there are any questions from the council for me or for the staff. So I'm going to take a public testimony now. Please come on down when I call your name. Aurelia Sanchez, Maria Noel Fernandez, and then David Wall.
Hello, thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. What I'd like to talk about is the marijuana sales tax. I agree with it. I voted for the marijuana laws here in California, but I do have a concern. I'm here to ask the council to give thought about banning marijuana cultivation in residential neighborhoods. I live behind, there's a home behind my backyard that grows probably more than 18 plants of marijuana. Last year, the police did come out, and there was nothing they could do about it. I contacted our assembly people, I contacted my council member, Sam Licardo, and this year, a neighbor of mine asked me to please, if I could work on this, so I said, okay. So I have a petition to ban outdoor marijuana cultivation in residential neighborhoods. I'm getting a few of my neighbors to sign it, and one of the reasons is that the smell is horrible, especially where they're in full bloom. I cannot go outside my backyard, and even the front of my house will smell, and my biggest fear, and my neighbor's biggest fear, is that we live in a high-crime-rate area and which is showing an increase in burglaries and other drug-related crimes. These outdoor gardens are creating uncomfortable living conditions and a risk of violence and injury to us as nearby neighbors. The cities of Concord and Sacramento are currently seeking to pass ordinance banning outdoor marijuana cultivation. Please consider our request for this ban in residential zones. So please, please consider this for my safety and the safety of my neighbors, and also in reading your budget message, I just want to caution the council, be careful of who you give money to, and I'm not picking on La Raza Roundtable, but to me, that's more of a political organization, and if you're going to make choices, I think we need more recreational leaders. I know we had a community meeting last night in my neighborhood.
Sorry, your time is up.
Okay, thank you.
Maria Noel Fernandez and David Wall.
Good evening. My name is Maria Noel Fernandez, and I'm a part of the Community Budget Working Group. For the past two months, neighborhood nonprofit and faith leaders have been coming together to discuss the future of our city and what it will take to get us back on track. We were deeply concerned after the mid-year budget review report of the city manager, given there was no urgency demonstrated to restore services, even with the positive report. The budget group quickly responded by sending a letter urging The budget group quickly responded by sending a letter urging for action around restoring city services. We are pleased to see some of this urgency included in the March budget message. However, the reality is that in order for the budget to truly reflect the needs and values of our neighborhoods and for residents to have the support they need for their families, we must take bolder action. On public safety, the message vaguely discusses residential burglaries. What communities need are concrete goals established that reduce residential burglaries and increase the number of burglars apprehended. Additionally, if we want to know that, if there is an effort to recruit officers, that our city will not simply become a training ground. It continues to be unclear as to what the strategy is to strengthen and retain the police department. Senior services, the quality of the senior nutrition program has quickly deteriorated. Let us be clear, the current outreach being done to seniors is unacceptable, and if more evaluation is going to be done on this programs, seniors must be at the table so that the results are real, that seniors are heard, and next steps are identified. Lastly, libraries, parks, park rangers, community centers, and code enforcement, all crucial areas that keep our neighborhoods safe, and yet they are simply not reflected as a priority within the message. On behalf of the Community Budget Working Group, I ask that if you take away only one thing from today, that it is this, cautious optimism is fine, but do not allow that cautious optimism to get in the way of filling the urgent needs of communities across the city, and especially in the most marginalized neighborhoods in San Jose. If we do everything that is within this message, will it be enough? Will we be safer? Will our neighborhoods be healthier? If the answer is not a resounding yes, then more must be done, and as our elected officials, you can do better.
David Wall.
Sir, cautious optimism, that's coming from somebody that's had 14 years or so in the public saddle, that basically created the disaster in the first place. So it's neat to see somebody that participated in creating the disaster pat themselves on the back. Page eight of your budget message, we'll just focus in on item K.
I think it's, well, it's coming back. Good work.
Testing.
Mr. Wall, you got it?
Sir, yes. Item K, I want to read it into the, into the record. Homeless encampments, quote homeless encampments, solving issues related to homelessness must be a high priority. The city manager is directed to return during the 2013-2014 budget process with a funding recommendation and strategy to support homeless outreach services, creek cleanups, and permanent housing, period, close quote. Permanent housing, you know? What I told you before in the Rules Committee reports is now the integration of the foundational aspects of an entitlement program. Now, nowhere in these homeless encampments is the term vagrancy used and/or, nobody talks about the mentally ill parolees that have escaped detection from their parole agents, people that are out there with outstanding warrants, need to be put in jail. There's drug abuse people out there, there's alcohol abuse people out there, there's all sorts of Megan's people, Megan's-less people out there. Now, with your integration of inclusionary housing, you've got to tell people that you're going to spread the pain of these people coming into every district's neighborhoods, instead of getting rid of these people, basically, just get rid of them out of the city of San Jose. But no, you're going to entice this element to come here, and taxpayers are going to have to suffer with this in their neighborhoods. And then you got, you have to say, where's the money for the police? Permanent housing for vagrants?
That concludes the comments for today on the budget message. We're taking no action. This is agendized for the 26th of March, when the council will take action. But we'll move now to the next item on our agenda, which is item 4.2. That's follow-up on council questions from the November 13th, 2012 Housing Needs and Strategies Study Session. That was, you all remember that? Council spent a lot of time trying to figure out the range of things we might do to deal with affordable housing and homeless issues. We told them to come back with some details, and back they are with a thorough report, lots of possibilities. But as usual, there's a problem of having money to do all the things that we know will work, things that can be done, but yet it's always a financial difficulty. And I think our Housing Department, Santa Clara County, Housing Authority, Destination Home, and all the service providers and partners that work with us on these issues day in and day out, this is not something that city alone can, can deal with, and we're happy to have partners as we work through it. Today, we'll have a staff presentation, and then, of course, public testimony and council discussion with some direction at some point of where to proceed from here. And as noted earlier under the budget discussion of the budget message, we need to give some direction in the budget process because ultimately, we have to allocate some resources to implement the things that we're talking about. With that, I'm going to turn it over to probably not the city manager. I think Leslie Corcelia is going to take the lead perhaps?
I'm going to turn it over to Wayne Chen, and he will start the presentation.
All right, thank you.
Well, first, thank you very much, Mayor and the council, for the opportunity to follow up on the study session back on November 13th, 2012 regarding the city's housing needs and strategies. Again, I'm Wayne Chen from the Housing Department, and with me are Jackie Morales Ferrand and Leslie Corcelia. So one of the key purposes of the study session was to provide information on current and future housing needs for the city of San Jose and to receive council feedback on strategies in order to meet those broad and diverse needs, in order for staff to update the city's housing investment plan, which is our locally determined comprehensive housing plan. At that study session, staff and eight panelists provided a background on San Jose's residential needs across income categories. That includes employment within the, the drive-in economy, the support economy, those who are in the working poor category, those who are on fixed income, fixed incomes and on no incomes at all. Staff also received several questions from council and was requested for staff to provide a follow-up on those questions. That's a primary reason for this particular item today, as well as to continue receiving council and public feedback on a broad-based housing strategy across incomes for the housing We'd like to quickly provide a brief summary of the high-level takeaways from the November study session. First is that economic prosperity is linked to housing. Annually, the CEO survey conducted by the Silicon Valley Leadership Group finds that high housing cost is one of the key barriers or top business challenges for employers as well as for families and households working and living in San Jose and the region. Although affordable housing remains a high priority for the business community, our ability to provide affordable housing and new units has gotten even more difficult than ever. Over the longer term, San Jose does expect to experience significant demographic shifts, so that's one area that we will need to plan for. We'll have an aging population, but we'll also have a population of, of young professionals entering the workforce. And we like to be able to provide housing opportunities for both the aging population and for the, the economic segment in which we'll have young employees and new employees employed here. We also have a very diverse community, and that's one of San Jose's great strengths. It's our diversity. And with that is to look at the diverse housing needs to add to our existing primarily single-family housing stock. One of the items that did come out was that the, the private sector on its own typically does not truly provide affordable housing on its own, and that's something that we'll, we'll look at. We do need to reduce the cost of housing. That's for both market rate and affordable housing units. This could include a variety of options, maybe it's smaller units, maybe we're looking at new building techniques, new financing tools, streamlining the, the process for affordable housing. All those are potentially on the table. And then finally, without new funding tools and sources, and Leslie will go into a little bit later, the, the reductions that the city and the Housing Department has experienced, without new replacement tools and strategies, we're looking at substantial reduction in needed housing units. So turning to today, as mentioned, the council asked staff to follow up on several key items. Those items are presented on the slide that you see in front of you. Several of the questions relate primarily to funding. What's the size of the funding gap? What sort of revenues do we currently have in the city? What are some new tools and strategies we can explore? We were also asked to explore regional partnerships, discuss the homeless issues, and consider strategies there. And also a question on the welfare exemption that affordable housing developments utilize. So turning first to the question of the cost of affordable housing and the foregone property taxes via the welfare exemption, a quick background is that the purpose of the exemption, as provided by the Board of Equalization, is that the exemption is to provide tax relief for charitable uses. These are public-purpose uses that the market typically does not provide on its own, and they include things like hospitals, charities, scientific uses, affordable housing. And this is an exemption that is authorized by the California Constitution. To take a look at this question, we did two analyses using two case studies, an actual 75-unit development and a 91-unit development. And we found that for the 75-unit development, there was an annual cost of foregone property taxes to the city of $6,675 for the entire development. And for the entire development of the 91-unit development, there's an $8,372 annual amount for property taxes foregone. When we think of costs, we also do think about the benefits, you know, what are we getting for the cost? And we, we think there are several. First is that, and you'll hear a little bit more about this later on, is that everyone has a need for housing, but the market by itself did not provide housing for everyone. So if we take present conditions into focus and use that as something to reflect on, is that the current price increases in the housing market affects everyone looking for housing. Everyone is facing the same market price. But the labor market is segmented by different occupations, different industries, different wages. As we've seen in, excuse me, as we've seen in recent reports, the current economic recovery has been uneven, with job creation primarily in the high-income and low-income occupations. And so what this does is it increases the number of low-wage workers who face a gap between what they make and what housing they can afford. So while this condition is in part related to market conditions, the solutions have typically been in the domain of the public and nonprofit sectors, who depend on tools like the welfare exemption to create housing for people who earn market wages but who cannot afford market prices. Because this tool is available, we wouldn't necessarily expect developers to not use it because it does exist. Additionally, the exemption, while it creates foregone property tax revenues, it also creates foregone costs. The cost of services not needed because families who would otherwise fall through the cracks, but who are now living in safe, sanitary, stable conditions, would not need the services and the costs that are associated with code enforcement, police, health and services, et cetera. And studies actually show that the cost of providing permanent supportive housing for homeless individuals, for example, is actually far lower than the cost of recycling individuals in and out of a uncoordinated system that doesn't provide permanent housing. There are jobs and wages that are generated through affordable housing. We, we did a study and analysis using the National Association of Home Builders model, and since 2005, out of the 5,200 units constructed, we estimate that there were 6,300 jobs, both direct and indirect, created with $290 million, $290 million of wages, again, both direct and indirect wages, wages that support the economy and that funnel through the economy and support local jobs. Finally, while there is a property tax exemption, there are other taxes and fees paid. So going back to the case study, the 75-unit development did pay fees and taxes equalling about $1 million. And that for the 95, 92-unit development, total fees paid for about $690,000. That is a one-time fee versus an annual exemption, but wanted to highlight that there are fees and taxes generated by affordable housing development. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jackie Morales Ferrand.
Thank you, Wayne. So there have been significant changes in the financial landscape of the housing world. We're beginning to finally see an improving financial picture, where we're both seeing now a demand for both homeownership and rental housing. While we saw relatively few developments move forward when the financial markets collapsed, we're finally beginning to see a breakthrough in our housing market with building permits being up over the last 12 months. We've issued over 3,700 permits, and so we're really beginning to see developments coming forward and building again. There's also, on the consumer side, a huge demand for both rental and homeownership. On the rental side, we're seeing rental rates going up that are higher than our 2001 average rental rates. So this year, the average rental rate for all units is $1,825, which is much higher or close to what it was in 2001. So it's really telling us that the market really is beginning to recover on the rental side. On the, but I think what's most challenging for us is the new rental housing that is being developed by the market has significantly higher rental rates. And so they're ranging from $2,000 to $3,000 a month, which is making it very difficult for more moderate and lower-income people to access the market. Interest rates are continuing to be low, which is good for the borrowers, although there are still credit and cash requirements that borrowers have to meet. And in our affordable housing developments, when we're, those are opening up, we're seeing long lines, hundreds of people trying to get in with long waiting lists of people trying to enter those developments. On the homeownership side, buyers are trying to purchase homes, but now we have very little inventory. We're beginning to hear those stories again of people who are making offers and they're being outbid, and prices are going for higher than what the homes are being offered for. Our foreclosure filings are down from their peak of down by 25%. But in contrast, to this high demand for housing on both the rental and homeownership side, we now have a significantly reduced amount of funding available for affordable housing. And so just to remind you where we've been, again, the elimination of the redevelopment agency has taken away the majority of what we have used to produce affordable housing. There have been legal challenges to the inclusionary housing ordinance, which prohibits us from implementing citywide rental requirement because of the rental control issues. And outside of redevelopment areas, we're unable to impose an inclusionary housing requirement on the for-sale side because of a legal challenge. In addition, the state funds that we've been traditionally used to are either fully or close to fully being expended. And then lastly, we have seen significant reductions in our federal housing programs, including a 40% reduction in home, which is the federal government's prom, which is the federal government's source of funding for permanent affordable housing, and a 45% reduction in CDBG over the last 10 years. So we have significant financial challenges. We were asked the question, how much money do we need to fill the gap, considering all the funds that we've lost? So the first one is, if you look at the 20% fund, we've lost $15 million annually. The rest of the funds were used to repay our bonds. From state and federal sources, we estimate that we've lost approximately $15 to $20 million. When you take a look at how much housing we produced over the last year and take 20% of that, and had we been able to, we would have had an inclusionary requirement, that's about 500 units. So we've lost $50 million annually that we would have to invest in order to recapture those units. So it's the total value of all the funds that we've lost is somewhere between $80 to $85 million annually. And then if you look at our pipeline, if you say, okay, what would it take for us to fund the current applications that we have on file? For the five projects in the pipeline that need additional development funds, we would need $27 million to fill the gap for them to be able to proceed. And then if you want to look at just the, the cost of what it would be for us to produce a supportive housing unit for homeless, a homeless person, it would range somewhere between $150,000 to $200,000 per unit. So the gap is quite large for us right now. Another question was, what are the types of revenues that we have and how can they be spent? I'm not going to go through in all this detail, but I did want to just highlight a couple pieces on each one of them. So program income, just to remind you, is the source, it's our primary source right now, and it's made up of loan repayments predominantly from what used to be the 20% fund. These are now, they were a housing asset that got transferred to the city, and our loan portfolio is approximately $800 million. And yes, that can be used to fund homeless construction for permanently affordable housing. We have a housing trust fund, of which we spend 100% of those funds for homeless activities. Negotiated developer payments is our ability to, when a developer asks for some consideration, we negotiate an affordable housing requirement, and that can be used for we negotiate an affordable housing requirement, and that can be used for permanently affordable housing, I mean, not permanently, but homeless housing supportive. CDBG can be used to pay for both services, but we do have a cap for public services and also construction-related activity, not for affordable housing activity, but it can be used for public service activities to support homelessness. When you look at the CDBG funds and the ESG funds of what we're spending in public service, 64% of our funding is going to help homeless and to provide homeless services in the public service arena. The home program is the housing arm for the HUD programs, and it can be used to fund tenant-based rental assistance, and we are going to be funding 100 vouchers per year under that program to benefit the homeless, and it can also be used for construction. ESG, again, is just a homeless fund. HOPLA is a fund to help people with AIDS, and CalHome is used to fund housing rehab and homeownership assistance. The one thing I didn't mention with it is we have an additional hit on these numbers for home, CDBG, and HOPLA and ESG because of sequestration, so there's a 5% cut from those numbers as well.
So as Jackie showed on the chart before, we anticipate in next year's budget having approximately $29 million in program funds for affordable housing. Just want to put this in perspective. So in fiscal year 1213, the current year, we had $62,800,000 for affordable housing programs. In fiscal year 1112, it was $93.4 million, and in fiscal year 1011, it was $89.9 million. So what we're really looking at is about, a budget of about a third of what we had in past years. So I think, you know, it goes to show that our ability to be able to deal with our affordable housing challenges and with the homeless on our streets and to deal with the encampment residents and other things is really challenged unless we can find revenue to replace what we've lost. So there are a number of potential local responses, and we did describe those in the staff memo as part of Attachment B. We did discuss in more detail two of those ideas that we felt had held the most promise and that are being used by other local governments in more frequency now, especially with the elimination of redevelopment. One of those is a housing impact fee, which imposes a fee on new residential development to offset the demand for affordable housing that's created as a result of that development. Because it's a fee, we would be required to do a nexus study. Mountain View just recently passed their housing impact fee in January, which is supplementing their commercial linkage fee that they have in place, and they set that fee at $10 per square foot of residential space. Other cities in the county are also looking at this as a potential source and are at varying levels of evaluation and looking at it through a nexus study. Another promising tool is one that we have used in the past, and we can continue to use it and maybe possibly more aggressively, which is public benefit zoning. And what the concept there is that when the city takes any kind of action where it provides incentives to a developer, whether that's through its zoning powers or just through various negotiations where we may rezone a property, allow more density, reduce parking, other things, that we get something in return. And I think we've been doing that fairly frequently as we've negotiated with developers, but it hasn't always been for affordable housing reasons, and that's a tool that could be used to either achieve affordability within that development or funds that could be used for financing affordable housing development elsewhere. So the city can also offer incentives for the development of affordable housing, such as those we've used in the past, waivers of fees or taxes. In recent years, we have eliminated those waivers and exemptions. So in addition to the loss of subsidy dollars that we mentioned that are real dollars, we have also lost some incentives that really had monetary value to developers because of the loss of those incentives. So at the state level, moving on from what we could do locally, I think there's a lot going on and needs to be going on at the state level. Jackie mentioned that the state funding Proposition 46 and 1C is nearly depleted, and so the state is looking at how it continues to be active in the affordable housing arena. The memo does go into a lot of detail about a lot of the bills, and we'll be bringing some of those forward to you in the next six weeks or so, but did want to just raise a couple of them that are promising. One is the state permanent source. This is the second year that this bill is going through the process. This would create a $75 document recording fee on non-point-of-sale transactions and is expected to create a source of about $300 to $600 million a year for affordable housing. To put that in perspective, redevelopment created $1 billion a year for affordable housing, and Proposition 46 and Proposition 1C added another $250 to $500 million a year, so $300 to $600 million compared to 1.5 billion. So it's coming back with some of the money, but not all of the money. There are also nine measures out that would reduce voter thresholds. When the governor eliminated redevelopment, he did say he was going to provide tools to local governments to be able to help them to do housing and economic development in the future. One of the things that's a challenge for local governments in creating new fees or taxes is the need to go to the voters and get that two-thirds voter approval. So there are a number of constitutional amendment proposals that are out there that would reduce the voter threshold to 55%. That would certainly be helpful if the city were to consider any kind of housing measure that required voter approval. And lastly, there is a bill out that would take bond funds that had previously been approved by the state's voters for rental, or, excuse me, for for-sale housing for veterans, and it was specifically for the purchase of single-family homes, farms, or mobile homes. And Speaker Perez has a bill that would allow those funds to be used for rental housing for veterans. That is a state constitutional amendment. Again, it has to go to the voters because the voters approved the bonds in the first place, so that would be sometime in the future that that would happen. At the federal level, that's, it's a much slower pace at the federal level. It takes a long time. We've been talking about the housing trust fund there for many, many years, and I'm not sure that we're seeing anywhere that that's coming closer to being reality. They are looking at getting funds for that housing trust fund through a cap on the mortgage interest deduction, something we're likely to bring to the council coming up shortly because we have some concerns about how that proposal is being framed and what impact that has on high-cost areas like San Jose. So while partially we're in favor of that idea, we have some concerns as well. And then Jackie did mention sequestration, and I think that that is a real issue for us and the continued erosion of federal housing funding. This is an impact on our housing authority. Right now, I think, you know, the Housing Authority has been partnering with us to provide vouchers, and there is some concern over the ability to continue to do that given the sequestration. So that's something to keep in mind as well. Also, as Congress grapples with tax reform, that might also impact housing and impact the low-income housing tax credit, which has really been our main source of getting increased numbers of affordable housing units here in San Jose. So moving to regional issues, we were asked to look at this. We're working very closely with a host of different partners on a number of issues surrounding housing and homelessness. With general housing and homeless response, we're working very closely with the County of Santa Clara and with the Housing Authority to coordinate our efforts and think outside the box. The memo describes some more formal partnerships that are in more of the conceptual stage, so we are having conversations about those ideas, but in the meantime, we are working on ways that we can work within our own systems to work better together. And at some point, we may want to expand the conversation of the regional dialogue with other cities in the county. I think right now, we feel like we want to, if the city and county in particular and also with the Housing Authority can make some progress, we'd like to see that happen first and then bring in other cities. I think as they see reduced resources and the loss of redevelopment, there's more interest, I think, for them as well in talking about regional solutions. With homelessness, the regional coordination expands beyond those three entities to include Service and Shelter Network and other organizations that are involved in reducing homelessness. So we're currently working very closely with Destination Home and various partners on a homeless framework that develops solutions for the homeless based on their specific needs, spanning housing services and employment. And with encampments, we're working with the Water District, various transportation agencies to coordinate, develop, and develop shared goals and responses. Housing Department staff is right now working with staff from the county and Water District on a strategic plan for encampments to focus our efforts. And lastly, I just wanted to mention the Federal Hearth Program, which I think has been mentioned a couple of times before the council, but the federal government is making a shift in how it manages its homeless dollars and is consolidating a number of programs into what is called the Hearth Program. That program will establish a more formal governance model for how those funds are overseen. HUD now provides more of that administration, and now it will become more of a local responsibility. So Destination Home is leading the effort to plan for how Hearth will roll out in Santa Clara County, looking also at the governance model, and the city and county staff are engaged with the broader community in providing input to that eventual program design and operation. So we know this is a lot of information and that we had a very long memo for you to read, but we are hoping to receive your input and direction today, and that will help guide us in the development of our five-year plan, which we plan to bring back to you a little later this year for your approval. And with that, we're available for questions.
I'm sure there'll be plenty of questions, but I'd like to do is take public testimony, hear from the public, and then we'll come back for council discussion and questions. A lot of people want to speak on this item as well as another item on the agenda after this, so I'm going to limit public testimony to one minute to make sure everybody gets a chance to speak and that we have time remaining to get on the items that follow. Please come on down when I call your name so that you're close to the microphone when it should turn. There's room in the front row. Jennifer Loving, Yvette Laura, Michelle Flores.
I'd like to thank Leslie and her staff, council in particular, mayor, council members, Ricardo Rocha Nguyen, for their leadership in ending homelessness and their recognition that regional solutions are necessary to further our collective work. The crisis of homelessness is not something that one entity can solve on its own, and I know the scale and the magnitude of homelessness in Santa Clara County has humbled all of us. Spring Street, with its visibility and vulnerability, served as a more public manifestation of this crisis, but encampments like this are just one of the many places that homeless people are living. And the problem is not going to resolve itself on its own. It requires a collective commitment to systematically reduce the number of people that are living outside. Housing 1000 is a partnership between the City of San Jose, Santa Clara County, and a host of service providers, and has emerged over this past year as an effective solution to ending chronic homelessness. We know the solution, and we know how to manifest it in our community, and over the past year, campaign affiliates have housed over 350 people, but we know that's not enough. Am I out of time already?
Unfortunately, yes. Sorry, it goes quickly. A lot of people want to speak, though, so I need to move on. Yvette Laura, Michelle Flores, Jenny Nicholas.
Hello, my name's Yvette Laura. I'm here to represent Star David Ministry as well as Firehouse. We are an agency faith-based that goes out to the homeless community once a week, and we find what is the need of the people, how do they end up like this, what is your story? I believe if we can partner with the City of San Jose, we can help be a part of the solution. These people are one paycheck away from getting off the streets. If we can come together as a community, we can help get more people off the streets than we think. We got to go out there and see what happened, what is your story, and how can we be a part? We got to get the community together. This is our city, and we got to take a stand as one. That means working with the city, the county, and our own community with each other. And if somebody would listen and help us, we will help you. We have a proposal, we know it works, we've seen it work. It's been over 10 years that there's a process that works. You know, we know there's chronic homeless, but what about the people who are just that one check away or that one thing away?
Sorry, your time is up.
Thank you.
Michelle Flores, Jenny Nicholas, Louise Chicouine.
My name's Michelle, and I'm also here from Star David, and I'm just here to back up the homeless. We've been going out every Sunday, and we just need people to back us up now that has the money and resources. We built the relationships with them. People are crying out for help, so we know not all of them are drug addicts or alcoholics. Some of them have the money, they just don't have first and last month's rent. Some of them work, so not all of them are just, you know, categorized as the homeless. So we're just here to back them up, and we just now need your guys' help to support us because we don't have the funding, and we know or hope you guys can help us out, you know, not just give us the runaround because we're just here to help them out.
Jenny Nicholas, Louise Chicouine, Sparky Harland.
Good afternoon, I'm Jenny Nicholas, the COVHC Life Builders. First, I'd like to applaud you all for beginning to discuss and chunk out this really difficult problem. There are really good infrastructures and relationships and a system that we have developed that we know works, and the time is now to bring it to scale. We need to focus on funding for short- and long-term housing solutions, and with the infrastructure and the collaboration and the effective working partnerships that we have now, we will be able to succeed in the work that we're doing. The funding is critical, though, to make that solution happen. Thank you.
Louis Chicouine, Sparky Harland, Kathy Espinoza Howard.
Good afternoon, I'm Louis Chicouine. I'm the Executive Director of Abode Services, one of the primary housing partners in the City of San Jose. It's been a wonderful five years to work here, and I wanted to say very personally, when I started in this work over 20 years ago, I did not imagine that it was possible to house the most chronic homeless people. And I was proved wrong as we were able to secure funds to rehouse rapidly homeless people, and many years later, we actually see a success rate of retention from that population is pretty amazing, over 90% retain their housing if it is safe, secure, and comes with supportive services. So I encourage you to continue your planning, your good thoughts on this, and we look forward to working with you on this. Thank you.
Sparky Harland, Kathy Espinoza Howard, Brian Greenberg.
As you know, we're looking at ending youth and family homelessness by 2020, and I still think we can do that. One of the issues I'd like you to consider is an implication when Hearth changes regulations, so nonprofits like Bill Wilson Center can no longer pay rental subsidies for our homeless youth. So we lost basically 50 units of housing that we were subsidizing because it only can be done through a public entity, not by giving support to a young person. We tried to change the legislation, they would not let it happen. But there's a lot that can be done as far as cities setting aside some money for rental subsidies. It costs me $1,800 a month to provide housing, case management, and support services to a homeless youth. In 18 months, 95% of our young people move on to permanent housing. So I urge you to look at that piece of sort of the less chronic homeless, homeless youth and homeless families, and look at what you can do as far as rental subsidies to help keep them in affordable housing. Thank you.
Kathy Espinoza Howard, Brian Greenberg, Julia Burkard.
Good afternoon. I'm Kathy Espinoza Howard, and I'm the Chair of the Housing Authority, and I wanted to thank Leslie for and her staff for her thorough report. I think we all know how drastic this situation is. We look forward to working with the staff of the Department of Housing so that we can look at new ways, new strategies, and new funding ways. As you may know already, that the Housing Authority is highly motivated in exploring new ways for funding affordable housing as never before. new ways for funding affordable housing as never before. Since last Friday with the sequestration, we've estimated that we may be facing a $12 million cut from this year's budget, which means housing vouchers. So I just want you to know where our desire to work with you to find solutions for this is a high priority for us. And I want to thank you for having the study session and actually having this hearings so that we can look at ways in which we can explore improved funding. Thank you.
Brian Greenberg, Julia Burkhead, John Davis.
Good afternoon, Mayor, councilpeople. I'm Brian Greenberg. I run programs and services at Envision Shelter Network. We combined the two organizations in July of last year. On the way in today, I heard a public radio report that San Jose, Santa Cruz, and San Francisco were the three of the top six most unaffordable housing markets in the nation. So we're at the epicenter of it. At Envision Shelter Network, we believe in the goals of Housing 1000. We believe in the goals delineated in the plan. We're committed to ending not only individual homelessness but family homelessness. There are solutions. There are measurable goals and objectives, and we are all on board. Thank you.
Julia Burkhead, John Davis, David Wall.
Good afternoon. I'm Julia Burkhead with Community Technology Alliance. Community Technology Alliance supports the allocation of additional funding and resources for permanent housing for homeless residents of San Jose. As the data collection partner for 272 local programs serving individuals who are homeless and at risk of homelessness, CTA has helped determine that more than 1,100 people are living in homeless encampments in this community. As reported in our most recent community-wide report covering calendar year 2012, 28,759 individuals served by our partners indicated that they're homeless, and many of these are individuals with disabilities who will need long-term support with housing costs and with case management to help them retain that housing. We appreciate your support of this issue and look forward to additional resources to be able to end homelessness in this community.
John Davis, David Wall, Dana Bainbridge.
Council members, I wanted to bring to your attention a proposed Assemblyman, Tom Haminoy. It's the Bill of Rights for the Homeless. Anybody familiar with this bill? We don't have any documentation for our homeless. And with no documentation, it's no different than having an employee that you want to get rid of or you want to move on. You're going to be toast. You're going to see lawyers with waiters on going down creeks looking for their clients. I sent all of you my suggestion. I called it three strikes and you're out. It's a soft three strikes and you're out. It has the San Jose Police Department, Downtown Street Association to go to each encampment and interview each one and give them 72-hour notice that they need to move, along with the fact that we're going to provide housing for them. The second step is we come out 72 hours later. If they're still there, we cite them. Consequences. Our third strike is 72 hours later. We come out, and if they're still there, we take them to jail, and we put them where they should be, behind bars, because every single one of them are breaking the law day in and day out, and I've been attested to that.
Sorry, your time is up.
Okay, thank you.
David Wall, Dana Bainbridge, and Evelyn Stivers.
The people that comprise the majority of the categories of homelessness has been done already by the county. They include the mentally ill, parolees, drug abuse people, alcohol abuse people, and the Megan List sex offenders. Nobody wants these people in their neighborhoods. I propose that we shut down the Housing Department completely. They're causing nothing but problems to this city. And Mr. Mayor, it's time that you really consider asking President Obama or Governor Brown, for example, Governor Brown to send in the California National Guard, or President Obama to send in the necessary military force structure to round these people up, triage them out to wherever they need to go, either prison or mentally ill institutions, or to put them out somewhere where they can dry out from their drug and alcohol, but not in San Jose and not on a taxpayer's dime as referenced in Councilmember La Cardo's six-page memorandum. This thing is not going to work. You're just transferring and warehousing a problem.
Dana Bainbridge, Evelyn Stivers, Carrie Lung.
Things easy to judge people's problems and harder to find solutions to them, and so I really support this proposal's initiatives for community collaboration. At First Christian Church, we've had the delight of partnering with Downtown Streets Team and a workforce supportive housing program where we've housed people in our church building who were in Streets Team's Back to Work program. Over the past 22 months, 79% of the people in our housing and moved into permanent housing has been great to celebrate with them that day when they got their own place. I also support the initiatives in this that invite faith communities to focus efforts, their efforts, and their own limited resources on transformative programs, ones in which the meals they serve are connected to resources. We had our own learning curve and stopped our meal program when we watched people we were feeding die because they weren't connected to other services, and we intend to change that and start Recovery Cafe and collaborate and other things, so we'll actually address solutions rather than rendering judgment. Thank you.
Evelyn Stivers, Carrie Lung, Shannon Brown.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. My name's Evelyn Stivers. I'm with the nonprofit Housing Association of Northern California. I really appreciated the staff report, and I'm just going to say really quickly, we're clearly in a crisis mode with the lack of funding, so it would be really, I think the most important thing that the council can do is to move forward on a NEXUS study. Supporting other legislation like the state SB 391 and 1229, other tools to get funding is really important, but what's clearly within your control that you can do is authorize the NEXUS study and get a housing impact fee going. We know from San Francisco and Walnut Creek and Berkeley and Sonoma County that the housing impact fee has been effective at raising revenue for affordable housing. That's what we need more than anything else, so please, please move forward with that. Thank you.
Carrie Lung, Shannon Brown, Eileen Richardson.
Hi, I'm Carrie Lung, speaking on behalf of Mid Penn Housing Corporation. We've had a long history, a long partnership with the city. We've developed and managed over 1,100 affordable homes here. First, I want to congratulate the city staff for a very thorough and informative report, which has already become a reference guide for other cities, and also to really congratulate all of you for the long hours you're putting in to studying this very difficult issue. San Jose's remarkable history of producing affordable housing is really a testament to your commitment to making sure that housing is provided for all who live and work here at all income levels, and the need is obviously tremendous. We also recommend the adoption of a housing impact fee, which we know many other municipalities are considering because it can produce a significant and ongoing stream of revenue that you can use to leverage key state and federal resources for affordable housing. Thank you again for all your hard work.
Shannon Brown, Eileen Richardson, Eileen Hunter.
Hi, my name is Shannon, and I had it all three years ago, and through personal tragedy and some bad investments, I found myself staying at one of those encampments on the street and in a shelter, cold-weather shelter. I was one of the lucky ones, though. I found Downtown Streets Teams. Dana said that 79% of the people who live in the supportive housing units go on to permanent housing. I'm in permanent housing, the Downtown Streets Teams, Round Table Properties in San Jose. So your decisions here make an impact on people's lives. It saved mine.
I'm Eileen Richardson, Executive Director of the Downtown. So programs are working. They really, really are, and in the eight years that I've been doing this, I have never seen more collaboration with the executive directors of all the different agencies, with you, councilmembers, thank you, the mayor, thank you as well, and with the Housing Department. They actually made Round Table Properties happen so that Shannon could have a permanent home and move out of the creeks. So now is the time to really do something. We need money that we know we cannot end homelessness without ongoing housing resources. This is from Jen Loving because she got cut off. It's absolutely critical that we have a permanent funding source to address the spectrum of affordable housing in our community, and applaud the council taking action to ensure that we are successful in addressing the housing crisis here.
Thank you.
Eileen Hunter, Rich Rizzo, Tina Marcellus.
I see you. Do you see me? Do you? I need affordable housing. I moved to San Jose because as a single mother of two, I could not afford the $1,700 rent in Mountain View anymore, so I decided to commute on the bus to Palo Alto from here. In May, after eight years at Stanford, my job was outsourced to India, and I am now an unemployed 58-year-old tech worker. Now I can't afford my $1,400 and $1,450 rent in San Jose. Some people say that you should move when you can't afford to live somewhere. Should I move from a community where I have established myself, have friends and family? I started an organization to help homeless women. I volunteer for Housing 1000 and Sacred Heart. A surprise to me, I really like living in San Jose. Should I move, or should I stop paying my $500 Cobra insurance? San Jose has built some beautiful affordable housing communities already. Thank you. Thank you. Unfortunately, most have very long waiting lists. Please continue to make affordable housing a priority. Please make funding for affordable housing permanent.
Rich Rizzo, Tina Marcellus, Tony Valadeo.
Hi, I'm Rich Rizzo, and I'm a lifelong San Jose resident, and I'm fortunate to go to some pretty good schools like Bellarmine University of Santa Clara, and I'm representing Sacred Heart Community, but more important, here representing myself. And I want to, I'm here because I want to see something to help somebody before I pass away. It's my personal thing, and I know all of you are dedicated to public service, and you feel the same way. Now, there's a few things I'd like to say about, we need a funding source for sure, but you're working on that. Companies, I read in the memo, where companies would rather, if we had affordable housing, we'd be able to attract a lot more industry here. Now, just I'll end this on Gavin Newsom. When he was mayor of San Francisco, he made, I heard it on radio and TV, quite a dent in the housing thing, I think by granny units, but it's something we should definitely look into, and nobody has brought that up here today, so it's my pleasure. You're about ready to cut me off, aren't you, Mayor? I get the idea. Thank you.
Tina Marcellus, Tony Valadeo, Jolene Jones.
Hello, I'm Tina Marcellus. I'm a member of the Sacred Heart Affordable Housing Committee, and thank you for taking the time today to hear us. We have a serious crisis in our city, we all know. The crisis is important to me because I am currently homeless. I've been lucky to have friends and family to help me out and haven't ended up on the street. You see people in tents everywhere. I've never seen anything like this, and it scares me to death. Every time it rains, I worry about these people. When I hear about an encampment being cleared out, I worry. The city has done a good work in the past in this area. Our Action Committee is more than willing to help in any way we can. Big problem, big crowd to solve it. Thank you.
Tony Valadeo, Jolene Jones, Kevin Zwick.
Good morning. I'm with Sacred Heart Homeless Action Committee. Good people that help you. They're great people. Affordable housing issue is a huge embarrassment. Not enough education out there for the public. We all need more informed on this issue. This will make it just a bit easier, and undertaking as massive as this can be reachable. We, the people, are the only ones that can make this right. Being homeless like myself, this can happen to anyone at any time. For about two and a half years, I've been homeless with my fiancee. Catch couch, grides, friends, floors. No more routines, no place to shower off today. I estimate $60, $90 a week. Just be a regular person. I want to thank you for kicking tail like you guys have been doing. Please keep up the good work. We need to develop a permanent source of funding.
Sorry, your time is up.
Thank you.
Jolene Jones, Kevin Zwick, Poncho Guevara.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Jolene, and I'm here to represent Sacred Heart Community Housing, Affordable Housing, and I went to fantastic schools, Cupertino School District, UC Santa Cruz. My life was going on really great until I developed a devastating disability where I'm only able to work 15 to 20 hours a week, so I make about $200 a week. I'm also on disability, but with that combined, I can't even afford a room to rent. I just found out yesterday that my landlady has cancer, and I need to move out, so in 30 days, I actually won't have a place to live. I'm trying to decide if I should move out of the area. I feel like it's a moral obligation for all of us to contribute to the good of all people at all income levels, to represent a diverse San Jose community, and I really hope that you guys can help because I've tried to do waiting lists, and literally the waiting lists are closed for the last five years. So there's really nowhere for me to go. I appreciate your help. Thanks.
Kevin Zwick, Poncho Guevara, and then Israel Laura.
Hi, my name is Kevin Zwick, and I'm with the Housing Trust of Santa Clara County. I just want to thank the council and staff for your longtime commitment to affordable housing, and to the mayor and councilmembers Nguyen, La Cardo, and Rocha for your memo on homelessness. And while everything in that memo is going to have an impact on homelessness, the best long-term solution is to create permanent supportive housing. And of course, the only way you're going to create permanent supportive housing is to find a new source of funding for affordable housing development. So I'm just here to say that that needs to be a short-term goal, not a long-term goal. If we can start identifying new sources of funding for affordable housing and get some of these permanent supportive housing projects going, they're going to be ready in two to three years or three to four years when the subsidy programs that you guys are looking at are going to be done and wrapping up, and we're going to be needing places to move people into. So inclusion, I just want to commend the council for your continued focus on affordable housing, the time you're putting into this, but let's keep working now on finding a new source of affordable housing funding and get going on that NEXUS study. Thanks.
Poncho Guevara, Israel Laura, Brian Darro.
Good afternoon. My name is Poncho. I'm the Executive Director of Sacred Heart Community Service, but I'm here with the Sacred Heart Housing Action Committee. What I wanted to be able to share with you is, one, thank you for your leadership on housing. I mean, San Jose has a tremendous legacy of being able to do a lot of fantastic work that's actually meeting the broad needs of a lot of folks in our community, but we have, what we heard about is a $100 million problem, a problem that is striking us with the loss of redevelopment is a huge, huge blow to our efforts to actually make a great quality of life for so many residents. Last year alone, Sacred Heart was helping council over 6,200 families, over 23,000 people that came to us for assistance to prevent homelessness, and we're only able to serve 7% of those. So you taking the efforts now to actually build on the success record and looking for a permanent source of revenue, and that starts with a NEXUS study, looking at what we can do to backfill this crisis, because it's not going to end with clearing out the encampments this week. It ends with being able to come up with a real source and bringing our community together, and you have the leadership to do so. Thank you, and God bless you.
Israel Laura, Brian Darro, Monica Garza.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, city councilmen and women, for giving us the time. Israel Laura, faith-based organization, and all I'm asking is, and I know and believe that this is a step in the right direction, amen. Call me crazy, outdated, but I believe in the Word of Transformation, right? I know because I see it every day in my father's life, Pastor Sonny, I'm sure some of you are familiar with him and the work he does in the gang community. He was laughed at, told he was crazy, "You're wasting your time," and yet these same individuals have graduated from high school, have graduated from universities with degrees, and turned their lives around. I believe this is the land of opportunity, and that opportunity shouldn't be determined by your race, your gender, your beliefs, or your pay income. City council, you need us just as much as we need you. Let's pull together and find solutions to restore this great city to its former glory. I know we pride ourselves on being the heart of Silicon Valley. That means we believe in innovation. We believe in creativity, so let's pull together the city and faith base and all these other organizations, and let's find a solution. People are crying out. Let's not judge them, but let's find solutions. Thank you for your time, Mr. Mayor.
Brian Darro, and then Monica Garza, Crizo Wong.
Good afternoon. I'm Brian Darro with Working Partnerships USA. I wanted to thank everyone for your leadership on this issue over the years, and I wanted to say that we support moving forward with a NEXUS study for a residential impact fee and also studying other local funding options. There's no question that the loss of redevelopment funding, as well as the Palmer decision and the local decision regarding our inclusionary ordinance, were a traumatic blow to affordable housing. The only question was whether there was going to be an adequate policy response, so we're very glad to see that the city is looking at new local financing options. The need for affordable housing continues to exist and grow. Unfortunately, about a third of our local workforce earns less than the local self-sufficiency standard. The average monthly rent now in Santa Clara County, as folks maybe know, is nearly $2,000 a month, and Forbes magazine ranks San Jose as one of the very worst cities in the country to be a renter. So in this context, it's critical that we look at solutions to this challenge, and we support finding a long-term funding strategy. Thank you very much.
Monica Garza, Crizo Wong, Sandy Perry.
Hi, my name is Monica Garza, and
Hi, my name is Monica Garza, and I'm, I just ask that as council members in the city of San Jose, that you come together with us, the people, and help clear, not clear, but help the homeless. And keep in mind that they are people just like you and me. They're someone's mother, they're someone's sister, they're someone's father, someone's brother, and they are loved just the same. And they've had mishaps or things that they need help with, and they need to be taught how to live in society again, just like normal people, just like you and me. They have, some of them have jobs, some of them want to change, some of them, you know, they've lost their kids, families have been torn apart because of, you know, losing a paycheck or, you know, pay going down. And we just ask that you take that into consideration, that these people want to be helped, they want the lifestyle, and they can change. If we can put the funding for, to rehabilitate, you know, people in prison, child molesters, why can't we believe that they can be funded as well? If, you know, I'm also with Star of David Faith Base, and we believe in transformation, and if we can be changed, why can't they be changed, and why can't they be helped?
Sorry, your time is up.
Thank you.
Crizo Wong, Sandy Perry, Joshua Howard.
Hello. Thank you for the housing. If it wasn't for the housing, there wouldn't be much homelessness, but there is. But the reason why there's so much impact about homelessness is because people lose their jobs and for closing homes and other reasons. This is why you're growing, the homeless is growing, and we must end homelessness. And it wouldn't be justice or any peace into that. If you people help us out, we would appreciate it and end a lot of homelessness. Thank you. God bless you.
Sandy Perry, Joshua Howard, Ross Señorino.
Good afternoon. I'm Sandy Perry from the Affordable Housing Network and also Champ Deliverance Ministry. We support the affordable housing recommendations that have been put forward, especially the idea of developing a plan for a study to determine the feasibility of the housing impact fee, land conversion, public benefit zoning, and so forth. Some of the rest appears to be a little bit problematic. We support housing everybody that we can and getting them. As far as I'm aware, the Destination Home and a lot of the other programs have depended heavily on Section 8 vouchers. As Ms. Howard commented, the housing authority is now talking about cutting and not expanding vouchers. They have to cut approximately $12 to $13 million due to the sequester, which one commissioner estimated could mean taking 800 vouchers away from people that currently have them. So, this is a problem. If we can't house the homeless, we cannot enact some of the enforcement measures which are being taken.
Sorry, your time is up.
Okay. Thank you.
Josh Howard, Ross Señorino, Gail Osmer.
Good afternoon. Joshua Howard with the California Apartment Association. Let me begin by thanking the council and staff for all their hard work and time they've put in on this issue. Having been involved in the affordable housing discussions in many different cities across the region, this is one of the few affordable housing discussions where a variety of options have been brought forward to the policymakers, not just staff bringing forward one or two with the hopes that it gets adopted. So, I want to thank staff for looking at this pragmatically. One of the speakers discussed the issue of rental subsidies, and serving on the board of a nonprofit that does provide rental assistance, I can tell you that our foundation runs out of funds in the middle of every month to provide rental assistance. And it warrants a permanent, community-wide solution to address this issue and the many other issues that you're facing surrounding housing affordability and homelessness. However, it should come no surprise that the Apartment Association, our members, are not supportive of a housing impact fee. Housing development is sporadic, and funds generated from an impact fee are generally one-time funds that will only help a finite number of individuals. If affordable housing is truly a community-wide issue, it warrants a community-wide solution. We would encourage you to give consideration to the idea of a citywide parcel tax, citywide sales tax.
Sorry, your time is up.
Thank you.
Ross Señorino, Gail Osmer, Lydia Ghul.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I appreciate the fact that I may be to get up here and speak, and Mr. Mayor and you and the whole council deserve credit for bringing this, this subject up in such a public manner. We know we have a problem, and you show your humanity when you do something like this, and you just don't brush it under, brush it aside. Many people are homeless, and I too belong to the Affordable Housing Network. I'm very proud of that fact. And the thing is, with the homelessness, it's not an easy subject whatsoever. San Francisco's been trying to, for so long, trying to get people into some sort of housing, get them off of the streets, whether they're mentally ill or not, and people that are down on their luck, once in a while it happens in life. So, we got to turn their luck around and give them a housing that they need. Thank you.
Gail Osmer, Lydia Ghul.
Good afternoon. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm Gail Osmer, and I live at Colonial Manor, a senior park in San Jose, Council District Nine. I'm here today to let you all know, and I'm sure you're aware of our owner, Peter Wang, has come back to our park and wants an increase over and above the 3% that he legally gets. He wants $8,501 more per month. And this is a senior park. Most of the seniors in our park are on a fixed income. I've had many calls, I've had people crying to me saying they don't know what to do, they don't know where to go, they can't afford this $8,501. So, please, if you can help in any way, we have to stop slum owners of mobile home parks. Thank you.
Lydia Ghul.
My name is Lydia Gell. I'm with Sacred Heart Community Service, and I have been meeting with the Housing Action Committee recently. You know, during the holiday program, you guys all know Sacred Heart, during the holiday program, we saw hundreds of volunteers. But one woman in particular struck me as somebody who actually came here to ask for help, but she remembered Sacred Heart because she'd been volunteered before. And for the first time in her life, she was unhoused, she had to ask for help herself and became a customer at Sacred Heart. And Dorothy actually was not somebody that's by herself. There's many, many different people that are experiencing something very similar. So, what I'd like to say here today is just that these are the kind of issues that are happening to all kinds of unexpected folks. And I'd like to ask for your help to be able to make sure that we're looking at solutions far beyond just the short-term solutions around sweeping encampments and things like that, looking for a permanent source of funding that's going to help provide solutions to many, many families across the city for the long term and not just for temporary solutions. Thank you.
That concludes the public testimony on this item. We'll have some council discussion and debate, and eventually some sort of action will be taken here in a few minutes. I'd like to start by calling on Councilmember Licardo.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to thank all the members of the community who came out today to speak passionately and eloquently about the need and the very long road that we have in front of us. And thank you for many of those who are out there in the audience today who work very hard on this important issue every day. I also wanted to thank councilmembers Don Rocha, Vice Mayor Madison Nguyen, and Mayor Reed for their leadership in affordable housing and their working together with us to try to fashion a strategy for taking a step forward. And we recognize that this is just one step of many steps. And we may be changing directions as we learn along the way, but I think it's important for us to take one step. And that is what is offered in the memorandum dated March 8th. And I'd like to make a few comments, but I'd first like to move that memorandum. Thank you.
All right, you have a motion on the floor?
I also want to thank our Housing Department, Wayne, Jackie, and Leslie, and all the folks who have been really bearing an incredible burden to try to solve, I think, I shouldn't say solve, that's really the wrong verb to use. I think it's, this is one of those very intractable challenges that the community has very high expectations for us to somehow resolve. But I think we recognize that the challenges in front of us are much bigger than any one city can handle. We're very fortunate to have a great relationship with the county, and I know Emily Harrison's here, and I appreciate the hard work that Emily and Gary and others at the county have been really investing in this challenge. I wanted to make clear that what's in front of us does not in any way concede the, the issue about the need for a NEXUS study with regard to inclusionary housing, that ordinance which we passed without a NEXUS study. I would assert, that ordinance continues to be legal, and I know we are battling in the courts today to preserve that ordinance in the hope that we'll have a long-term source of revenue. And then, in the absence of that, obviously, we need to continue to look at other solutions. Whatever solution we choose is going to cost money, and we know that that's in short supply these days. But the cost of inaction is far greater, and we see that cost every day in our emergency rooms, in our emergency response, in police, in fire, in our public safety, environment, public health, all the impacts of these, of the encampments and the homelessness that we see around us, not to mention above all, the human misery of so many who suffer in these situations. So, we're attempting to move forward with a strategy that employs both compassion and common sense, and I would appreciate my colleagues' support for what's here, though I certainly look forward to hearing comments from my colleagues to see if there are better approaches, and certainly we should be open to that. I also just want to thank Reagan Hanger from my team for her hard work on this, as well as Paul Pereira. Thank you.
Mr. Rocha?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll go along with the thank yous and thank housing staff for their work on this from beginning to end, as far as my experience and time up here on the council. And let me start with thanking the mayor. As most of you know, my interest in study sessions and hopefully good policy work that comes out of those has been pretty consistent, and the fact that we had a housing study session which led to this action, I really appreciate the mayor supporting me in that effort. And at that study session, Vice Mayor Nguyen and the mayor supported a memo that I wrote that got us, again, to this date. And what I want to remind some of the folks, as we heard from more of the speakers than less of them, was the interest in affordable housing. That, as a standalone item outside of the immediate need of the homeless issue, to me, is something that we really shouldn't take our eyes off of, and I, my hope is that the council recognizes that and is committed to that issue. If I may ask the Housing Department a question or two, especially on the memo that's in front of us today from Councilmember Licardo. The action items in here in terms of the turnaround time, are you going to be able to meet some of these, or all of them?
So, the two timelines that I see, one is, I believe, I'm coming through the budget process with a response to many of these items, and that's something that I've already had some conversation with the budget director about the timing for that and how we would do that, and I'm, yeah, I'm certain that we can, can make that. As far as returning to council in two weeks on the NEXUS study, we've already started to get ready for that. As long as the council were to take that direction, give us that direction today, we would be prepared to have a memo by the end of the week on that. So, I think that we are good with that. And I'm not completely certain on number four, what the other items that we would want to bring back. Maybe I can get a little more direction on what we'd be bringing back in one month. Just to make sure, because we are continuing our discussions with the county and housing authority and various folks, and we've, we've reported on that in our memo that we have before you today. We, I think, on C, we are asking for that, I mean, would like to have that sort of direction of where you would like us to prioritize our funds, and then we will include that in the five-year plan, what the council is, direction is there. And on D, we will be bringing back bills over time, probably over the next six weeks, as we have staff time to be able to bring those through to rules. And then, on E, I need to work with Joe Horwietl on this because this is actually his item that's going to the CED Committee, just making sure that we can have that thorough discussion after the March 25th meeting. So, I think, you know, there are a few things I think we can hit, and maybe some might, might slip a little bit.
Thank you. Now, as far as the direction from this memo as a follow-up to the memorandum from your office, which is very helpful and a great, a great document, thank you very much, is there some more direction that you were expecting out of this council beyond what was in here in terms of the points that you listed in here? Because I was trying to go through and make sure that we addressed a number of the issues that you were looking for direction on, and if there's any glaring components of this that you would need a little further clarification on, I'm happy to provide that as a potential friendly amendment here.
I, I think the, when we answered the question, so our memo to you is more informative in response to your questions, and so what we, what we'd be looking for from you today was just direction on, on where you, you think we should spend our funds, because that's what our housing investment plan will be about. How, so how, how we would target them is important. And then, also, if, our housing investment plan also has policy pieces to it, so if there were different funding or different policies you wanted us to look at, we'd want to know that today as well. So, again, we weren't asking specifically or making any recommendations, but really just wanting to get feedback.
And you feel, you feel the feedback provided is significant enough for you to do some further policy work on this?
Yes, I believe so.
And that, there's, there's a paragraph listed on page 14, "If more funding were targeted to homelessness, the council may wish to change the income allocation policy to commit a greater percentage of billable funding to those earning less than 30% of the area median income." On that item, you think the direction given, was it, in C-
Yes, I think-
...addresses that issue?
Yes, so C does address that issue. The other thing that I would want to do as we come back to you with the five-year plan is to look at the wide spectrum of housing needs that there are, so we don't just have the homeless and those with, with fixed incomes, but we also have our working poor and also people who work in the service industry and those in our driving industries that we want to provide housing opportunities for. So, what I would want to do is we could focus, based on this direction, we would focus our limited resources there, but I do think that we would want to look at other tools and ways that we can help those other parts of, of the city as well.
Okay, thank you. It's great to hear. I couldn't agree more. Kind of along that line, the, the housing impact fee was mentioned by a number of folks that came up to speak, and I had a question just about a general obligation bond. And could you do both? You could bond on that housing impact fee and accelerate the funding upfront? Is that an option to do?
I think a general obligation bond would be a separate matter, but let me-
The general- No, I'm sorry, just a general bond, I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, the general obligation bond would be secured by property taxes, so, but if you, I think the issue you're asking is, can you bond against potential development fees?
Thank you.
That's a market question. I think it's difficult because it really is conditioned on development, which goes up and down with the market. So, how you would size a bond issue, and, you know, you've got to give the, some kind of security to bondholders. So, it would be difficult. I think we could explore it with our finance folks, but it's more of a finance issue than it is anything else in terms of what kind of size you could come up with in any kind of bond issue.
And as far as your professional opinion on that, is there other precedent for that in other jurisdictions or here in San Jose in the past?
You know, I'm not sure, as it relates to a housing impact fee, whether that's been looked at. It has been looked at for other sources of funding. I know with tobacco tax revenue or other things that some jurisdictions have tried to, to bond off of the ongoing revenue, but those are tricky. And I, you know, I agree with Rick, we'd have to have some conversation with our finance staff.
Do you think it'd be worth that conversation, or should we not put any time and resources into that question?
We can. It would be great to have the source to be able to, to have as a continuing source to, to bond off of, but yeah, we can certainly look into that.
Would the maker of the motion be okay with that direction to include that?
Certainly.
To consider? Thank you. And I don't know who got the second.
Vice Mayor Hensel.
Were you comfortable with that? Thanks. Now, the mention of a parcel tax, as far as your experience, which one is most viable for you in terms of a long-term solution and, and best solution, so to speak?
Well, a parcel tax, as I understand, and I will also defer to Rick, is, requires a vote of the, the people, so that's, we would have to go to our voters, and it would require a two-thirds vote unless the voter threshold were, were lowered. So, that's what, what it would take, and it would take a campaign, certainly, to, to put that before the voters. So, I can't really respond. Polling that's been done in the past on getting a two-thirds vote for affordable housing, it's pretty, it's tough. It's tough for almost any type of, of funding. That's the reason why school bond has gone down to 55% voter turn approval. So, I think it would be challenging. It's not something that, that we shouldn't consider, but I think it'd be challenging.
Thank you. So, I'll close with just thanking some of the folks that I spent some time with prior to that housing study session that gave me a lot of feedback and direction on where they think these issues should be going, and their, their advocacy on these issues is extremely important. Without them, we wouldn't be as successful as we are. Jennifer Loving of Destination Home, Kevin Zwick of the Housing Trust, Shaila Ballard of Leadership Group. I spent some time with Core and also Roan companies, and their feedback was extremely valuable. I appreciate- I appreciate everybody and the work they're doing on this issue. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Let me just first thank Councilmember Sam Lucardo for this very comprehensive memo. Obviously, we have an extensive list of recommendations here that we're asking housing staff to look at, but essentially, for me, what we have in front of us are potential comprehensive solutions for two very expensive but significant issues, and that is affordable housing and homelessness. And these two issues obviously have affected many members of our community, as we have seen over and over again, every time we have hearings on these two issues, we have members of the public who are here to speak with us. But I just want to share with members of the public who are here today that although we might not be able to achieve everything we have here in the short amount of time that you want us to, this is really a commitment to the fact that we, this council is very committed to addressing these two issues. And so I think knowing that staff is ready to move forward with probably some of the things that they can do right away or immediately, and then leave some of the other items for later discussions. But I also wanted to talk a little bit about the housing impact fee. I heard some members who are not very fond of this, but I think that if we don't have a NEXUS study, if we don't have anything to determine to help us understand if this is something that is feasible, we might not be able to know the answer. And so, and that's why I signed onto this memo, you know, just pretty much giving my voice to some of the potential solutions that we can offer for members of our community. And so with that, I'm very happy to second the memo, and I hope that my colleagues will support the motion. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Campos.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of questions to staff, can you explain a little bit more, maybe that would be something that planning, if planning's here, is planning here? So as you're coming down, Joe, well, let me, so you're not focusing on my question and focusing on the stairs, I'll wait till you get down. There you go.
Thank you for recognizing that.
So, there's been some discussion about public benefit zoning. What, from a development standpoint, what could you see as being incentive enough to inspire a nonprofit developer, because more than likely, that's, you know, that's, I mean, those are the ones that build affordable housing, what would it need? And really, is it just, you know, giving special land use designations, is that enough to want? Okay.
No, actually, I would turn it kind of the other direction. And this is something we're looking at right now as a part of thinking about implementing the general plan and how to achieve our jobs target, is what if you go through, as Leslie explained, through the zoning process, where we approve housing, and it would be focused on market rate housing, through the zoning process to go through and essentially say, here is what the city is looking for with every housing unit? And that, I think, is a much broader conversation than just affordable housing, but it is an important piece. But I think it also should be looking at how do we incentivize employment, you know, office buildings, or retail, or, you know, infrastructure, it's essentially an impact fee, but you, instead of going through the normal NEXUS, you could do it NEXUS, but also through development agreement, and that's what we've been doing in North San Jose, is saying, in exchange for the ability to build market rate housing today, there is a cost per doorknob to do that. And that's something, a discussion we're getting ready to, we're framing up so we can come talk to council committee and council overall, to see if that's something that makes sense or not, because I think it is a way to harness kind of that energies out there right now in the marketplace.
So, given that we've made some decisions as a council, in particularly in North San Jose, to relax some fees, do you see, you know, that this next round of adding fees in order to get affordable housing, which, by the way, I think we need to do everything that we can, including, you know, get the state involved to figure out what's next with affordable housing, to incentivize, but given that, what kind of impact do you see that happening on some of the progress where we've been making with attracting employers, and even attracting developers to build apartments or for-sale units?
Yeah, I think it is one of having to watch where the market's going. A year ago, the apartment market was extremely strong, and we were able to negotiate very hard on some projects to achieve some great goals with affordable housing and economic development. That seems to be softening. I think we don't have the strength to be negotiating on the employment side to do like an employment impact fee for housing, clearly not. So it's one of really looking at what is our competitiveness in the marketplace, where do we want to be in that competitiveness? We absolutely want to be laser-like on being very competitive on employment, on market rate housing, you know, we are the bedroom community of the valley, and we're still going to provide a lot of housing, but we don't need to go through and provide every housing unit. So I think, Joe speaking, I think we have some room to go through and have some policy discussion around that.
Okay, thank you. And then, let's see, is Betsy still here, or did she leave? So, Betsy, given, you know, you have your ear to the ground there in Sacramento, what do you see in these, in this next two-year, you know, bill cycle, that we should be focusing on, you know, as a city, as we're putting these proposals together? And keep in mind, I want to, this is a very comprehensive memo, it's loaded with a lot of good ideas and great ideas, but we should be, we should be so focused on what we need to do now, so that the immediate need, which, you know, every single person that came down to speak talked about an immediate need. So is there anything, you know, that we should be paying attention to in Sacramento?
Well, I think, to echo Leslie, certainly reinforcing, if we can, legislation the city supported last year, moving forward, you can use that as a vehicle to make your case, by stating these specific, concrete examples of why we support certain legislation. And I just think you have that as your vehicle, you have, this is your case study, and you can make your statement, and you can make your statement with our delegation and with leadership in Sacramento.
Okay, thank you. So, just some additional comments, and I appreciate the memo that Mayor Reed, councilmembers Rocha and Lucardo, and Vice Medicine Nguyen came out with, as well as the memo that Councilmember Chu came out with. It touches on, well, it touches and it digs and deals with the things that we should be dealing with. You know, I am, I am concerned, it's not even a bit concerned, I have some serious concerns regarding the enforcement side, where, you know, I would like that to be flushed out even more, because a lot of it sounds like pushing the problem out of the sight of, you know, the general public. And, you know, in terms of being an attractive city, yeah, that accomplishes that goal, but does it accomplish bringing dignity back to folks that are, that don't have a place to live, and are trying to get back on their feet and get into the workforce? Many of them are working, they just, you know, like one of the speakers said, they're living paycheck to paycheck, they're one paycheck away from getting into a, you know, a place. I don't know if the maker of the motion would be willing to bifurcate the memorandum, I'm thinking that he probably wouldn't, but I want to support the memo, I'm just, I'm just not comfortable with some of the punitive portions of this, of this memo. I'm torn, so thank you, that's my comment.
Is that a request, or?
Yes.
Okay, I guess what I'd like to say, offer is this. I appreciate the concerns that were raised, I know I've heard that, those concerns raised from others as well. I guess what I'd like to do is to allow the conversation to continue with probation, with the District Attorney's Office, with the courts, because I think there are a lot of opportunities here. We have great examples here in this county of diversionary programs, which ensure that we're not criminalizing behaviors that we know that many people are simply trapped in. And we have good models to follow, and I'm thinking, for instance, the Judge Manley's Court, for instance, in the drug context. But the truth is, is that many people who are homeless today are going to be committing crimes of some sort for which they're going to face some criminal sanction. And I think we would much rather have a rational system put in place, in which we have judges who are keenly, or a single judge who's keenly aware of the issues, the resources that are available, and ways to create diversionary process to nudge folks on a path to recovery, rather than simply locking them up. And I think the sentiment that we don't want to simply try to arrest our way out of this problem, I think is one that's well-received, I'm sure, among many of my colleagues and myself. I don't believe that there's anything in this proposal that specifically calls for a lock 'em up strategy. What it does call for is, let's create an integrated system, because we know that we're spending a lot of criminal justice resources already on people who are on the street, and there's almost certainly a better way. So for that reason, I would politely, respectfully decline the invitation to bifurcate, in the hope that we can at least get down this road, start the conversations, and if we don't like where we're going, we can change path.
Councilmember Camus.
Yeah, I also wanted to thank staff, and I thank my colleagues for this very comprehensive memo, and it looks like you did a lot of research and put a lot of thought to it. I appreciate the community-wide approach, asking Santa Clara County for help, asking the Water District, asking the regional Caltrans and other regional agencies. I love having a community-wide effort to solve this problem, so thank you for all the hard work that you did. I do have a couple of items that I was hoping to talk to you about. As far as the, I object to trying to have a permanent funding stream using land conversion fees, because land conversion fees do two things, you know, in good times, we'll have a lot more development, and then, so we'll get some money there, but in bad times, it will slow development, you know, it could be the difference between wanting to develop and not wanting to develop. So it could kill the development industry in bad times, and, you know, in bad times is when we need developers to start investing in our community, so I, for that reason, I don't, I think we should look at other sources, and I love your suggestion to look at the one-time funding sources, and again, asking for that. So I was hoping that if you could bifurcate that, I'd appreciate that. And I also love the fact that you want, you're willing to entertain in item number 3DII. I was, you know, the Tom Amiano bill that's AB5, I think it didn't pass in San Francisco, and I'm hoping that we, we can not just entertain saying no to it, but go out and just say no to it now, and be on record. I would make a motion to see if we can amend your, remember to include a, an outright, to simply say that the city of San Jose opposes AB5, so that we are not burdened with, you know, additional hurdles of, you know, of, you know, it actually hurts the police enforcement, it hurts a lot of different other issues.
Let me see if we get a second to that, there was a motion to amend, was there a second to that motion, first question?
Was that a friendly amendment, or was it a motion? A friendly.
Okay, so I'll let you address it.
Perhaps I could respond, and then if you choose, you want to choose to make a motion at that time, that'd be fine. With regard to the Amiano bill, I know that it's not been agendized, and so I don't believe we can take action today, and so that's why I'd ask for Housing to study it and come back and bring it to us. I certainly concur with your sentiment. With regard to the issue about fees, about which path we choose, what we've attempted to do is to ask housing staff to take a look at a NEXUS study. Obviously, we're not going to even be moving forward with a NEXUS study today, we're coming back in two weeks to be able to scope it. We're going to learn a lot through that NEXUS study, about both the impacts on developers, about revenues, all those things that I know are of great importance to us. With regard to the land conversion fee, that, my understanding is how they've worked in the past, is they focus only on those typically industrial land conversions to housing, which we have generally disfavored in the city anyway. And so, given the fact that those are not, sort of the category of housing projects which we've prioritized, in many ways, we've discouraged it, it seems like it's worth looking at. We're making no decision today to go forward such a fee at this time. I think it's worth just asking the questions, and so that's why I respectfully request, respectfully like to just decline bifurcating at this time.
Councilmember Colra.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to ask staff a couple of questions before I make comment, and one had to do with something that was discussed regarding inclusionary housing, that was originally put in place before I was in office, I know it's been held up. What is the, what is the status of it? And if we know, Rick, I'm not sure.
The case is pending in the Sixth District Court of Appeal. We don't have a hearing date at this point, but briefs have been filed, and it's pending.
And for, to refresh my memory and those in the public, what would it actually require or allow for?
Well, it was a standard inclusionary housing ordinance, which is pretty much common statewide, and that's why it was such a surprise that Judge Manukian struck it down. What it did provide was a, that there was a 15% inclusionary requirement, or in an Luffy, and there was also, which is key, a waiver provision that in the event there was a takings issue, that the city could waive the fee. So this was a facial challenge, and again, Judge Manukian struck it down, and we hope, we believe he's wrong, and we think the Sixth District will agree.
Thank you. I hope so, too, and, you know, that, I think this issue is very complicated, obviously, that's why we have so many people here from so many different organizations and community groups that are chiming in, in I think very effective ways, and in some cases, from different angles, and I do certainly appreciate our Housing Department for all the work, and I think that the Housing Department really has shown a compassion for those that, those that are in need of housing for many, many years. And I won't go through the list of all the folks that were already thanked earlier, but thank you all for being here and for being part of the solution in one way or the other. And, you know, and I also want to thank my colleagues for the memos forward, because of Brown Act issues, I couldn't be part of it, but I was glad to see it, I think it does raise a lot of issues and questions and recommendations that I think are very good, and certainly, this is a continuation of the discussion and not the end. But I do think it's important for us to lay a foundation here of homelessness, because, you know, the idea of homelessness as a specific issue to deal with, to separate it from the issue of poverty is impossible, especially when we've seen what's happened, particularly in the last few years in our nation. And as Nelson Mandela said, poverty is not natural, it is man-made, and overcoming poverty is not a task of charity, is an act of justice. And I would even add to that, it's an act of quality of life for all residents, if we can do something to bridge that inequality that currently exists. And as was mentioned during the staff report earlier, that a lot of the job growth that's occurred even recently has been very uneven, I'm very thankful that yesterday, the minimum wage was raised, because that addresses at least some part of that problem. However, the division between those that are on the upper scale of the wage scale and the lower is dramatic, and we're seeing much more added at the lower rungs than anywhere else. Poverty is certainly on the rise, we've seen a lot of articles and studies that have been coming out for the last few months that make it very clear. And I just want to mention that, because the reality is that we've always had homelessness in this valley, and frankly, this valley has been very wealthy for a very long time, I just heard on the radio, there's 10 billionaires in Palo Alto, that live in Palo Alto alone, and, you know, we have these incredible companies, and I'm very supportive of them, very glad that they're here, that make an enormous amount of wealth. I think we've done a poor job of having that wealth translate into making sure that everyone in our community is taken care of, including having the opportunity for good jobs that they can actually house themselves with. And I do believe that we need a funding stream for affordable housing, and I agree with the further studies to determine how that can be done, as well as a real effective inclusionary housing policy, so I certainly look forward to hopefully that litigation and... So I certainly look forward to hopefully that litigation ending favorably on our side. But in the past couple of years, in the last few years in particular, we've seen, and I know, because we hear it from all of our neighbors, and I think everyone up here certainly is sincere in trying to do something about the pervasive homelessness we're seeing, that has become much more in the open, as we've seen with the most recent encampment that was cleaned up. It's brought the issue to the forefront, but in some ways, that's a good thing. You know, a lot of urban areas, it's always been out in the open. In our case, it's been hidden up until the recent years, for the most part, not entirely. And I think it's good that people actually, especially with the enormous amount of wealth that we have in this valley, that people recognize that there are a lot of people struggling. As we drive home to our warm beds after discussing this issue in a half-billion-dollar building, I think that we need to have some perspective that there really are a lot of people that are struggling out there, and it's, the numbers are increasing. And it has to do with a lot of issues that we had no control over, a lot of issues that we, or some issues that we do have control over. And I was looking at a recent study, a 2012 annual homeless assessment report from HUD, and we are number one in the nation in unsheltered homeless population in terms of percentage, at 75%. We're number three in the total number of chronic homeless, only behind New York and LA. And we're number two in the total percentage, only behind Louisiana, New Orleans, Louisiana, and of course, Africa Trina, they have a very large chronic homeless problem there. So this issue is enormous, and I think that there are some things that I do certainly, in fact, I think most things in the memo are very good, and especially when it comes to collaboration and the studies that it's requiring us to do, including the NEXUS study for the impact fee. I do think that it's really important to have that study of the impact fee. I think a housing impact fee is important and can be important, but I think, I just want to make clear that it is certainly distinct, and that's why I raised the inclusionary housing issue, distinct from inclusionary, because the housing impact fee is typically based solely on the impact of new market rate residential development on the need for affordable housing. In contrast, inclusionary policy, as many know, recognizes the severe lack of affordable housing, independent of market rate development, and requires developers to include housing affordable to San Jose's workforce and other low-income, lower-income households when they build. And I also think there's another social value to having inclusionary housing, that you don't create the areas where, okay, well, we'll have the low-income folks here and this, that. We've seen that happen in many American cities over the many decades, and I think that it takes away from our ability to build a strong community. And so I do certainly agree with doing some of those studies. I do have some issues with the enforcement piece, where we have one and a half pages of enforcement. And part of the problem I have with it is that I, although I do agree with some, and I think it's very clever, the having the repurposed parking meters, you know, if you want to give change, you put them in there, and you can collect it and give it to organizations helping the homeless. And I also, as Councilman Carlomero, the court that they have at EHC, I've gone to that court to represent, when I was a public defender, to represent individuals, and it was very effective when they had light rail kind of infractions and this, that, and that was preventing them from moving on, even though a little fine was preventing them from kind of getting back up on their feet. It was a very effective one, and I certainly support expanding those types of programs. But as you know, a lot of what's being suggested here takes a lot of money and coordination. Judge Manley's court is an extraordinarily expensive court that I've seen him in the halls of Senate a couple of times lobbying for money for, but it also, he, you know, he does use oftentimes incarceration as a tool. And I think that when I'm looking at the enforcement piece, some of the, I just want to raise some of the issues that, maybe some concern if we don't have all the other pieces in place, including access to affordable housing, which is something we're not going to have in place, certainly not anytime soon, for the entire population. But the strictly enforcing of trespassing, I get that, I understand that, I get calls from my, you know, my community as well. But particularly when we have such limited resources to create, you know, to have, I can, I think we have much better uses of our police department and police officers than to move homeless individuals out of parks or creeks. And with 3A2, the strictly enforcing the prohibition on feeding of persons in public parks, that really troubles me, especially if we don't have an infrastructure in place to make sure that everyone that's homeless can get fed. A lot of homeless people don't feel comfortable going to dining halls and other nonprofits, and we have many of them that do a good job of feeding folks, but a lot of them don't feel comfortable. I've actually gone down to the park on several occasions to join community members to feed some of the homeless, and, you know, to feed them warm food, hot food, and to give them blankets, and I, you know, I've talked to a number of them, I've had a chance to interact with a number of them, and they're not otherwise going to places where food is being offered. And so I just, I understand a tough love approach, but I think we should start with the love and get to the tough part, once we have a system set in place where we can, where we can really make sure that we have the infrastructure set up. Another aspect that I think connects with that is the stay-away orders. Stay-away orders and location-specific encampments, I can get that if we have an encampment that creates a health hazard, and you don't want them just to come right back. However, there is a limit to the number of places where the encampments go. And if we don't want them seen, and we want the encampments that can't be seen closed down, at some point, you know, we're just going to be pushing around folks without a real plan in place as to where they should go. And a particular aspect of it is precluding public use and locations that preclude public use and enjoyment of parks and trails. That parallels with the strictly enforcing trespassing along parks and trails, especially those that are active. And I think that when we start combining all these individually, they all look good, you start combining them all together, we're basically telling the homeless, go places where people can't see you. Stay away from our parks, stay away from our trails. And I think that if, I just have a very, it's really difficult for me to support all those measures, because frankly, some of those enforcement measures are going to, are going to be, or can be put in place much more quickly and much more easily than the long, hard work of creating access to housing. And so my concern is that, well, we'll just start pushing them out of places that they're not seen, so they can't be seen, and then we'll get less complaints from the public, and then, you know, it's less of a headache for us as elected officials. I don't, I think, and I don't say that to think that everyone up here doesn't have the intention of resolving the issue, I think everyone does, but there's no doubt that this issue has become on the forefront, much in part because of the blight that our neighbors or neighborhoods are complaining about when they see encampments, whether it's along Monterey Highway in my district, whether it's, you know, St. James Park, or along the Cloty Creek, you name it. We've seen the complaints come up, and that causes us to, you know, take action in a much more hasty fashion. So I don't think individually, or the idea behind any of these things is bad by themselves, but I do have a, I'm just very troubled by how the enforcement piece is going to be executed. And if it's going to create, going down this path is just going to create the opportunity for law enforcement to simply just move out those that we don't want to see anymore. And especially knowing that we don't have the funding. I mean, the reality is, when it comes to poverty, comes all these issues, we have to look at our tax policy, we see these sequestration, it's hurting those that are already hurting the most. We see the 20%, when it was coming for redevelopment, it didn't feel like it was coming out of our pocket, but it was, that was all taxpayer money, that was going to affordable housing. And now, when we have to find a way to get it ourselves, then it seems like it's much more burdensome. But I do appreciate the item four about the different strategies that are being looked at for revenue generation, and trying to find ways to prioritize getting people into homes. And I think the other piece of it is truly keeping people in homes as well, that are paycheck to paycheck. And I think that's why I appreciate the work of so many in the audience, including the Housing Trust, for doing a lot of that work as well. But as you can see, you know, I'm very appreciative of the discussion, and I know we're going to have more of it. I'm just troubled by the enforcement piece, and, you know, homelessness is a condition, not a crime. And I'm hoping that we can focus more on that aspect, rather than just moving them along, you know, out of places where we don't feel, we don't feel comfortable having them in.
Councilmember Chu.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank the Housing Staff, and also Councilmember Compost and Kara. We, I have a similar reservation about the enforcement piece. And I had a conversation with Councilmember Licardo over the weekend. I'm kind of soft in my position, I think I'm okay to say, well, go ahead with the, with the study. I know this is really not a final decision, we probably will come back to us with some ordinate changes. Lastly, I raised a question during the study session, and I'll raise it again, which pretty much reflect my memo dated the March 7. I understand there are many causes of homelessness, and I believe that we are morally obligated to focus our effort on homeless US military veterans and those homeless that are caused by domestic violence. You know, I don't think within my lifetime I'll be able to eliminate a homeless in the city of San Jose, but I do really want to be able to eliminate those students that are still going to school and being homeless. So on the spending side, lastly, I would really like to see that we prioritize the spending of our very scarce homeless or low-income housing issue, and concentrate it on those families that are kind of displaced by domestic violence, as well as our returning US military veterans. Is it something that I missed in your report, or is there something that you're still looking at, or could you give me some little input?
Yeah, Councilmember Chu, I mean, there are a lot of different responses that we need to have based on the different, different needs of each group of folks. And so we have people with mental illness and people with drug and alcohol abuse, we have veterans, some of whom have mental illness, and we have a lot of different groups of people, and each one requires a different strategy. With veterans, we do have some additional tools that we don't have for the general population, because the Department of Veterans Affairs has some funding, including VASH vouchers, which the Housing Authority has used quite successfully, and we have some opportunities to increase those. So I don't think in our report, we didn't respond to that, because that wasn't one of the seven questions that we had. But we can, in the five-year plan, definitely go into more detail on those different groups of folks and what our response will be to meet their specific needs. On domestic violence, it's tougher, we were talking about it actually at a meeting earlier today, that a lot of the funding that's been available for that has been reduced in recent years. So that one's a little more challenging, but I think we need to get our heads together in figuring out how we will be able to meet that need.
Thank you very much. I know, yeah, the different group that takes a different strategy. And my memo is pretty, pretty much stated what to prioritize those very scarce homelessness or low-income housing to, for those two groups that I mentioned. So I wonder, Councilmember Licardo, would you entertain my friendly motion to include the prioritizing on the spending part? So we give, we make sure that certain, the certain amount or certain percentage of our homelessness, our low-income housing is going to the returning veterans and those families that are dislocated by domestic violence. Just give them a higher priority when we're thinking about allocating our resources.
Yeah, Councilmember Chu, I very much appreciate your concerns, and they're, I think they're shared by many of us. What I'd ask is, I would certainly, if it's acceptable to you, I would be willing to amend the motion to ask Housing Staff to return with an analysis of how we prioritize two groups of human beings that you've described, as well as other special needs population we know that are out there, when they do return during the budget process with a discussion of funding, because I think all of this is tied to dollars ultimately. And I know that's the ultimate prioritization, is who gets what dollars. So I would just be happy to amend it to ask Housing to incorporate an analysis of how we prioritize when we come back.
That's definitely a step forward, thank you.
Is it okay with a second, there, Vice Mayor? Okay, so we have a second friendly amendment. Councilmember Herrera.
Thank you, Mayor, and I want to thank my colleagues for the memos, particularly Mayor yours with Vice Mayor and Don Rutch and Sam Licardo. It's a very comprehensive memo, covering everything you could possibly think of in this. And also, I appreciate Councilmember Chu's and others who have submitted their thoughts on this topic. I don't want to repeat a lot of what's already been said, I'm very supportive of most of what's in here. And anything that I have concerns about, I mean, this is basically going to come back to us, and we're going to have a chance to get staff's feedback on all of this, so I'm not going to get too critical at this point. I can see why there's enforcement contemplated, we've heard lots of folks coming and talking to us about the damage to the environment in the creeks and all kinds of things. So I think we need to look at that, and I think we'll have a chance to further engage on this when we get more information about it. I was a bit concerned on the housing impact fee, just in that paragraph that talks about land conversion fee. So as somebody here who really staunchly opposes converting industrial lands, and I know most of the policy's been that we don't, I just don't want us to contemplate that at all. Because jobs go along with, you know, jobs are an important part of this, and I see people moving towards homelessness in part because they've lost jobs. They've had to go to lower-paying jobs, they've lost jobs, and I'm on a crusade to bring jobs. So I want to make sure that whatever land we have, that we can incent, beg, figure out a way to get industries here that provide jobs that pay money, significant money to our residents, that we do that. And I'm not suggesting anybody's necessarily saying that, but when I see conversion, you know, I just don't want us to do something that, in an unintended fashion, would take us in a different direction, because gaining more jobs for people helps with the homeless problem. That's, that's been my focus. And we need to really focus in on that. And I'm laser-beam focused on that. I also want to hear back from, I'll look forward to hearing back from the development community on the housing impact fee, too. So whatever fees we put into place, we want to make sure, again, that it incents the housing we want, and doesn't inadvertently cause us not to get more affordable housing. So I just, not having been involved in this as deeply as my colleagues, I'll wait to hear back from staff on that, but I'd be very interested in hearing about that. Public benefit zoning, too, that's very interesting, I appreciated your comments, Joe. Be very interested in that. Sounds like we could use that, not only for affordable housing, but to increase jobs, too, right? That could be something we can use?
That's correct. Is that it could be used for what is the highest priorities of the city? And as we've talked about the North San Jose items, the questions have come up, you know, what source, what use could we make of those? And that's really the policy question, I think, for the council.
And then I just had another thing, just not in this memo, but just as I'm thinking about, and I brought it up before. We have a lot of housing in San Jose, that single-family dwellings with people living in it, that's in different states of repair, some people who've lost jobs, or, you know, there are folks living by themselves in houses that they can no longer afford to take care of, with no way to really keep it up, who might want to move into something else, and there's really no housing for them to downsize into. I just think there's like this existing housing stock we need to look at during this process, too, to figure out, how can we facilitate people who are reaching retirement age, who want to move into something smaller, who don't, who can't figure out how to do that, and maybe free up that single-family house for somebody else to move in? Just, there's just all kinds of gaps, I think, in terms of people being able to move from one type of housing to another, and maybe free up housing for families, or, you know, so I just think we need to be creative in looking at our existing housing stock, too, and how we can facilitate those changes. The last thing is, I really support continued funding to keep people in their homes who haven't become homeless. There's people on the edge, I meet them every, I meet them every day, yeah, and in District Eight, too. And I was at a school yesterday, Kara Smith, 86% of their students are in poverty. That's in Evergreen. So we've got families who are struggling, barely making it, and I want to make sure that, you know, we don't end up with one more family out there homeless. So I think a really good way to help this problem is to not create more homeless, or to help people that are one paycheck away, to make sure that they don't end up out there. I did have one more point. People I've talked to, or that I've read about in the paper recently that are homeless, they're getting checks, and they're so homeless, they're working, they've got a check, they're either getting it from the government, or they're a low-income person with a check. We've got to find housing- We've, we've got to find housing that matches that income. That, that, I mean, and it's not just building housing, but it's also finding housing that matches that income. And, and this will not, may not be a popular thing I'm going to say, but i- if there are folks that are getting those checks that have connections somewhere else and there's housing cheaper where that somewhere else is, then we need to make sure they get housing. That should be the number one, the number one priority is to make sure they get housing. And if they're getting a check, I, I just want to know where's the housing that matches that income? So, um, I'm very supportive of my colleagues. Thank you.
Before we go through the council, for a second time, I had a few comments I wanted to make. Let's make it really clear that the state's efforts, successful efforts to kill redevelopment agencies has had a huge impact on us and our ability to do affordable housing and our ability to deal with homelessness. If you look back over the last thirty years or so, redevelopment funding, both from the twenty percent set aside and from the eighty percent part of redevelopment funding, but redevelopment funding, which we no longer have, we put more than a billion dollars into affordable housing. We had the most successful affordable, affordable housing program in the state most years. We generated over thirty thousand units of affordable housing. That money is gone. Along with it, billions of dollars of private sector money that came into the projects that we helped create. So we're in a, a very deep hole created by the state's actions to kill redevelopment agencies. That was a decision of the state of California. We're learning to live with it. But we're in a completely different world in terms of our capacity to do anything about affordable housing, which is why it's so difficult. Because we know what to do, we know how to do it. We've got people that have success at doing it, but we don't have enough funding, uh, to make it happen. The other observation, I guess, is it, it's kind of curious. When we talk about this, I, I look at what the state, the region, the county and the city do to constrain the supply of housing while working as hard as possible to create the demand for it. So we have an economic development strategy that, every city's got an economic development strategy, we want jobs, 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 jobs. When it comes to housing, well, we're not so sure we want it. San Jose has more housing than jobs. Other cities in the county have much more jobs than housing. And California Environmental Quality Act is commonly used to stop affordable housing projects in the state of California. Our zoning regulations are used to control housing development. We have green belts, urban growth boundaries, urban service areas, all used primarily to control the development of housing. And there are good reasons for that and I support all of that. But at the same time, we want to get as many jobs as we can. So we've created this dichotomy that puts us in a very difficult spot. And that's why, in large part, why San Jose is one of the most difficult places to be a renter in the country, uh, along with some other areas in California. But nevertheless, we're not going to give up on the issue. I've been working on the homeless question since around nineteen eighty-two, when I served on Mayor McKinney's Task Force on the homeless. And we ended up being able to create some shelters. Shelters are really important. Shelters have a very important role, but that we know that's not the answer to our problem. In two thousand and three, the federal government convinced a lot of us to adopt the goal of ending, uh, chronic homelessness in ten years with a coordinated strategy starting at the federal area. And we approved our strategy ten years ago. We had a Blue Ribbon Commissioned in homelessness and solved the affordable housing crisis that I co-chaired with Don Gage. We know what to do and we have the people who can make it happen. But funding is the, is the key part of that. So I had a couple of questions about funding and some comments on funding. The first is, we have housing assets. When the state killed redevelopment agencies, they by and large left the house, housing assets in the housing, uh, department or allowed us to put them into the housing department. So we have housing assets that generate cash flow. You've, you've seen that from the earlier reports. Are there categories of those assets that we could sell in order to generate, you know, uh, uh, an upfront money that we could use here in the short run to, to deal with that? So I know these are notes and there's all kinds of categories and some are long and some are short and seven hundred million dollars or six hundred million dollars, there's some assets in there. And the question is, is there some category that we could, if we wanted to make a policy decision, to sell those off, uh, to generate some, some cash? Leslie speak to that.
Sure. It's, I mean, it's a good question. We've looked at many times over the years because you can, um, can sell parts of your portfolio if you want to get immediate cash. And we actually did have a presentation from someone recently who suggested that. You get literally cents on the dollar for that. And for us, it didn't make any sense because we are dependent on our cash off our portfolio for our operations. If we cannot fund our operations, uh, because one of the things the state did with redevelopment dissolution was say that for the eighty percent side, you can fund admin, but for the twenty percent side, you can't. You've got to use your assets to pay for that. Our goal has been to be self-supporting and not to rely on the general fund. To do that, we need to have an ongoing revenue source. And I, I don't believe we'd be, um, recommending in any way that we, we, uh, try to make as much money today, uh, to have cash today, that we would not then be able to support ourselves in the future. The other thing is that we do believe that we will be able to get money off that portfolio over time. And so we are projecting, uh, this year, about ten million will come in. We get about six million on a regular basis, uh, that we will use for administration. And then the remainder, uh, over and above that is available for, for programs and, and projects. So it can be done, we can look at it, we have before. And I just don't think it's going to be the, the solution for us.
Okay. Well, it's important to do that analysis and I, I agree that we don't want to sell things for pennies on the dollar. But periodically, we have to take a look and see if it's worthwhile. I mentioned earlier, when we talked about the budget message, that there's not a lot of money to go around. And while there's a, a great deal of, uh, I think, support on the council to do what we can with affordable housing and homelessness, it has to compete with everything else in, in the budget, by and large, the general fund budget. And if you just look at what we could spend our one-time dollars on, there's probably a demand for forty to fifty million dollars of one-time dollars. That's, that's a lot more than we have of one-time dollars. And we're actually a little short on ongoing dollars and staff is working on, uh, some efforts to close that gap over the next few months on, on ongoing basis. So there's not a lot of money. We will have some money, I'm sure. But again, it has to compete with lots of other priorities and that is always a problem, which is why we've talked about an impact fee or dedicated funding source or whatever it may be. And I think that's important. I have a question about the, or some comments on the Nexus study because we're giving direction to frame that up, scope that out and, and bring it back. And I want to make sure that that work starts with the lawyers, that planners and housing advocates can be very passionate. Doesn't mean that the law is going to go along with whatever it is we decide to do. And I want to make sure that the work that gets done is, is good as we can, uh, within the limits, uh, of the law around the Nexus. Because we put a lot of work into, into our, our zoning, inclusionary zoning, and that's been on hold for a while while we wait. So I would anticipate that whatever we do with an impact fee is going to have to go through the litigation drill. And we should prepare for that, if the council wants to go that way, uh, to have the lawyers engaged early, uh, not at the end of the process, so we can frame it up. I took a look at the, the court decision in the San Jose inclusionary housing case. And the judge decided we needed to, uh, a Nexus analysis there. We obviously have, have that on appeal, but it did raise the question with me, well, what is a Nexus analysis? And Mountain View did a housing impact fee Nexus study. So I read through that and they cite a bunch of cases in here, all of which I've read and some code sections which I've read. And I find the, uh, Mountain View analysis, uh, underwhelming. I really don't think it would hold up to litigation because they have found a correlation and assumed causation. I don't think that's good enough. I looked at the cases they've cited and, uh, I think you have to have an impact for an impact fee. You have to have a cause and effect relationship, not just an association. And so I, I challenge our staff as they're working on trying to frame up the impact fee is to figure that out. Do you really have to have a causation or can a mirror correlation be enough? That's part of the legal standards. There's a few cases, not really a lot of cases on it. So, and I'm not trying to be a lawyer here, I just know that, uh, I want to win. If we, if we do something, I want to win. And so having lawyers in- involved up front and looking at the, the cases and trying to scope it, and maybe we'll have to have this discussion in closed session, I don't know. We'll let the staff figure that out. But I want to make sure that we do that work because most of the Mountain View study is about how you allocate the money you're going to charge. It's not about how do you demonstrate the, the impact, the causal link or the deleterious impact, as some of the, uh, judges talk about in some of the cases. So as we move ahead on that, I, I just want to make sure that we've done it the, the best we can so that we put the council in a position of making the best decision the council can make, uh, when we're faced with that at some time in the, in the future. Councilmember Oliverio.
Thank you, Mayor Reed. You know, this is, uh, obviously, obvious for some, obvious not for others, but this is, what we're going through, we're not alone. Because every country in this world has its issues with homelessness and people under, uh, underhoused, some hundred million people homeless, some one point six billion people underhoused. And it's just a question of how does San Jose and, and our country in the state manage the issue? And we have been, uh, a leader in that regard by producing with the investments the mayor made in the housing represented of the number of units we were able to build. And I think, uh, we wear it as a, as a proud support while other cities frankly didn't do much. And I think, uh, San Jose should do its fair share, but we can't do the region's share. It needs to be fair and allocated to, otherwise we are unable to manage our, uh, day-to-day type of items that we do. I do think the staff put together a really comprehensive report and covered a lot of their items. I was actually impressed with all the areas it covered. I think the memo put forward by my colleagues has a, a massive variety pack to manage a lot of the, the questions we're dealing with today. I would ask a question, um, to staff. Back when we, in your report, you were covering the topic of property tax. And, uh, basically I did, I did the math and it came out to eighty-nine dollars a unit. But in my prior conversations with staff, I got three hundred and ninety-five dollars per unit. So my question is, did these numbers, were they vetted with the Budget Office or the city auditor?
These, uh, numbers were the actual numbers for those two projects. And so it represented the nine percent of property tax that the city would get. So the number, the total amount of property tax, uh, that, uh, was exempted through the welfare exemption was larger than that. So these were actual examples.
Okay. So my, there, I guess two things. One, if, if the, the numbers, as you state, is eighty-nine, or it's the three hundred and ninety-five, which is a larger number, it's still something on a, a recurring basis. And so my question is, if, if it's to, you know, one, if it's the bigger number, which I, I suspect it might be, then that's obviously a loss of millions of dollars a year to the city to pay for ongoing services, to pay for a police officer, to provide services to homeless, et cetera. Or if it's small, as you say, then it seems that, why would we keep it as an exemption? If it's, if you, because in your, the staff report, it seemed as almost, well, it's trivial amount of money. Well, if it's trivial, then why shouldn't then everyone pay to provide the services that we, that we need? It's, that's how we do it.
Well, I think a couple of, of responses. I, I think we tried to explain it's a California constitutional, uh, issue. The city cannot, uh, tell developers that they cannot, uh, take this exemption. There have, and I think we also mentioned in the, the memo, that there have been some pilot agreements, which is payment in lieu of taxes agreements, that are now being challenged. And actually had a conversation with our county assessor, who was very unhappy, uh, with that idea of a, a pilot agreement. The reason for these agreements and the Cal- California constitution allows them is because this is, it is believed that this is a public purpose and that we will not build affordable housing without it. So even though it, it is a small amount per year, per, uh, per unit, when you're doing a financing for a development like this, it makes a difference. So you're looking at a long-term financing and it's the amount of equity that you would have to have upfront in the development and amount of subsidy that you would have to have to make up that amount is, is significant. So again, it comes back to dollars. Uh, you know, it, it is, it's expensive to build affordable housing. We need incentives, the states recognize that, actually the voters have recognized it. The only way for us to change that would be to get the state, uh, to put a state constitutional amendment, uh, on the ballot for the voters to, to change.
Appreciate that, understood. But Leslie, if we instead of had, or Rick, I'll ask Rick, uh, we have a, a choice. I mean, this council's by policy said we want to be with nonprofit developers versus for-profit developer that builds housing. If we chose a for-profit, then they would pay the property tax.
Well, it's probably more a me question than a Rick question. The for-profits, uh, also are exempted from paying property tax because the way that the, that the partnerships are created in order to get, uh, tax credits and to work through that process, uh, the for-profits use, uh, nonprofit, uh, partners and they also take the tax exemption. So the projects you've been seeing coming forward from our for-profit partners are also, um, getting the welfare exemption.
Thank you.
Councilmember, just, let me.
Real quick, Rick. Understanding, I understand the question from, uh, the answer from Leslie, but again, that's if they choose to partner with a nonprofit, a for-profit affordable housing developer could come forward with a, a development in itself not partnered.
That's true, but the policy of the city has always been to deal with nonprofits because to, in order for these property, uh, these projects to pencil, it's important that they get that property tax exemption. Now that, to the extent that you, it is part of the California constitution, it's state law, so we don't control that. To the extent, things you do control, such as park fees or other types of things, that, that has always been a policy issue with the city council in the past to exempt. And in the days of redevelopment, redevelopment always backfilled that. So these policy decisions were not made in the vacuum and, you know, they're always subject to change.
Sure. So, I mean, it, it is a choice. I, I think that's clear and it's, uh, and I understand that a nonprofit can pull together the tax credits in a better way, but my, my viewpoint has always been quality over quantity. If I have a sustainable city that's able to provide the services to all residents, I think that's best for the long term. Also understanding, uh, you know, it's, that's how we pay for things. And obviously, when you add up the thousands of units and you times it by whatever number we come out to, it's a significant number at the end of the year, uh, each year. And, um, so that, I just wanted to throw that out as far as a, you know, because I think it's important that we, we discuss it. And I know that we've had the park fee issue and then the, in lieu of the road paving fees. And in the end, if, if these, uh, developments don't pay those fees, they come out of the other fees and other people's roads don't get paved. So I understand there's trade-offs of everything and, and granted, the council as a whole can, and make those assumptions, uh, as it needs to. Other question for you was on Attachment A, which lists out the projects that are funded and projects that have partial funding and ones that are seeking funding. So I saw the San Carlos seniors, uh, which is, you know, great. It's, uh, already been approved a long time ago. We converted commercial land to residential, so that's all spec to go. But then you have the Sunol project, which is not zoned, and the city council voted already on this to not rezone it. So I'm just curious why that's still on the list? It would seem like, since there's such a backlog of money to fund projects, that maybe you remove this one from the list and stick with the ones that were actually zoned properly?
So that development is still on our list. It has an active application and it is still trying to work through those zoning issues. Obviously, if it's not able to do, to work through the zoning issues, we would not be able to move it forward.
Okay. Thank you. It would just seem to make sense to do the ones that are already zoned, as, as you've done in that San Carlos seniors, which is in, uh, which is in my district, which makes a lot of sense. And then, um, and, and Rick, on the memo, on item, the sit lie, if I recall, the city of San Jose are, has an ordinance in place that allows police to cite today for sit and lie. And then this is to, uh, not allow us to do that. Is that correct?
You mean on the enforcement issues? Yes. I think the, we're look, those are to look at and, and work with the system, the various criminal justice system to address those issues in a different way, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. And then, um, real quick on the property tax one, it is nine percent if it's in the city, but if it's in the redevelopment area, it's a hundred percent for the city. So I think that's important to note. And then, uh, obviously, we're not the only player when it comes to property tax. You know, some fifty-eight percent goes to the school district. And I've heard from, uh, some folks in the school areas that, well, if you exempt them all, that where's, where's the money come to pay for our services? So I think it's a, a question that we can always talk about. And then I appreciated the, um, the, the comment from the, from the representative, from Bill Wilson, mentioning the cost to providing the service for the homeless. And, um, And there's obviously a cost and that, and we, you know, whether it's nonprofit world, grants, you know, city money, county money, there's frankly is not enough to provide for everyone. And I knew, noticed, well, at the last time we had the study session, council voted to have information come back, and I didn't see it in the report, about when we encounter individuals that are homeless, we have a variety of services we may offer them, from housing to, to different types of services. But I didn't see anything about what's being done in New York, Florida, and Hawaii, which is for those individuals, and we know people come from a variety of circumstance and they're homeless, but for individuals that are for, for not able to get home to family and friends that may choose to do so if given the opportunity. I didn't see that in here because if there is 1%, 5%, 10%, 20% that choose that option, then the money we have enables us to take care of the population that wants to remain here or that's actually from the region. So I was curious, I just didn't see that in the report.
I think, I believe I answered the question in the, in the meeting to say that we already do that. So we do have funds to, if someone wants to be reunited with their family, we do work with, with our partners in, in the audience who will do that. So that's already something we do.
Right. Well, you had mentioned that, but then there was going to be more information coming back. And I don't, I'm sort of more interested in seeing it as an option that the city can help assist because, for example, if the Bill Wilson Center program costs $21,000 a year, and there's one individual that wants to go home, to be home with friends and family, then you're saving that $21,000 to go to someone that's going to remain here. So you're able to do, maintain the, help the population that wants to stay.
Yeah, no, I fully understand the issue, and I apologize if that was the direction from the council. It wasn't, it was not something that I took away, it's something we were to study more. If, if the council would like us to do that, we'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, the only reason I brought it up because as I made a motion and we voted on it. So, and I understood you had a verbal response, and that's fine, Leslie. There's always, you know, misinterpretation here and there. So I'm not going to, but I would, I would sort of see if.
Councilmember Oliverio, would you like a friendly, friendly amendment?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Councilmember Liccardo. I was looking for a friendly amendment, and I know this is a sensitive topic for some because some feel it might be cruel and inhumane, but all I'm trying to provide is just the option. If, you don't have to take it, but if, if there is someone in a unique situation that's, I don't know how I got here, but I'm here, you know, and again, they're doing this in three other states, then at least provide that opportunity. I know it's done through EHC, and it's really difficult to find on their website, but I'm just looking for a little bit more. And we're not here to ship them. It's just the fact is if they want, you know.
I'd be happy to include that inquiry for analysis in, in measure, if it's all right with the second.
That's okay with the second, so that's a third friendly amendment.
And then I wanted to ask Rick, when we build affordable housing, we, we as a city are doing this, and when we build it, that we, why are we not allowed to prioritize that San Jose residents are, have first shot at this affordable housing? Because San Jose can build it, and then someone can move from Ucaya, who hasn't contributed in any capacity to the city, and then, and gets that spot.
I can only give you a general answer, and there are fair housing laws. There are constitutional provisions that are, that really give a fundamental right to travel. And so having residency requirements in situations like that are problematical. I can get you a more complete answer in written form, but that's generally it.
Sure. It's just, I know we can market to groups, like, hey, you're a teacher, come here, but we can't guarantee the spot for a teacher. So it's always been a, you know, difficult when you have residents that are maybe the working poor. They've been in San Jose all their life. And, you know, that maybe they're a senior now, and they need housing. And yet someone else comes in who doesn't live in the area at all, and they get it. And I, it just seems unfair. So I just wanted to call that out. So it sometimes makes it difficult on, because we know we talk about wait lists, and I just think that's difficult. So appreciate the discussion we had today. I think a lot of people had a lot of good things to say, and I know it's an issue that we wear in our hearts. So I appreciate everyone's comments today. Thank you.
I did want to jump in and let you know that we do prioritize people who live or work in the city of San Jose, and especially in our homeownership programs. We actually have a tool so that the majority of homeownership opportunities that we did provide went to people who either lived or worked in the city of San Jose. So we do, and have asked our developer partners to implement preferences, and not requirements, but preferences.
So, so let's say, you know, it's three years from now, the San Carlos seniors development is open. How would a San Jose senior that's part of the working poor that needs to have that, would like that spot, how would you prioritize them?
We haven't done it on the, we've done it when they have initially opened up their slots, but I think there'd be a good question for us to look into how we could continue when they're having future openings on how they do prioritize people who live or work in the city of San Jose.
And Councilmember Liccardo, would you be acceptable with a friendly amendment just to have staff look at how we can prioritize open slots for San Jose residents and, you know, if there is their way? Obviously, there's the legal side, but if there's a way to provide, you know, more analysis of that.
The memorandum at, at 1B, little 1. Boy, that's a long memo. Sorry to do that to my colleagues. You'll see that there is, to the extent allowable, desire to focus rental subsidies on those who have, residents who have been previously identified and registered through the Housing 1000 Registry as having been living here in San Jose and a date in the past. The idea is, generally, we've been trying to focus a lot of our energies on the chronically homeless anyway, because we know the chronically homeless are creating the greatest burdens in the public safety net and many of the public systems, emergency rooms, et cetera. And so by identifying them, we'll be freeing up more public resources for more people.
And Councilmember Liccardo, so was that more based on homeless transitioning into housing, or would that include, you know, someone transitioning to senior, senior, affordable senior housing that maybe is not registered with that group?
Oh, yeah. Well, actually, the Housing 1000 Registry includes people of all age, so it doesn't differentiate there. The focus is simply anyone that we're going to prioritize for moving into permanent housing of any kind.
So to be safe then, residents on the edge, which exists every day, are they, while they're still in their housing, is it best to register for that, with that organization so that they hold a place?
They wouldn't be registered. These are usually individuals that are encountered while volunteers are out there in the parks and the creeks and so forth. And so, you know, obviously, I agree that probably the most efficient use of a very scarce dollar is to find a way who's, to keep someone who's in an apartment, in that apartment, if they're on the edge. Really, this is about rapid rehousing of folks who are already out.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that. I think it's though, I don't know if I'm becoming clear, it's just the, as I mentioned prior, you, you might have been a renter all your life in San Jose, just getting by, and, you know, you're no longer working, and you didn't save enough for retirement, and you don't have the ability. And then here we open this new affordable senior housing complex, and there's, it would seem to be that there's no, no, whether it's a certain number of units or prioritization, I mean, I think that's where I'm looking at, that scenario.
Perhaps I could address, first, I do think that priority exists today, but in addition to the Housing 1000 Registry, the memorandum also states that anyone who's also identifies through reliable documentary evidence that they've, you know, maintained by a city or county agency, they've been living in here. We're trying to prioritize the need that's here now, recognizing that certainly we want other cities to step up and solve the problem as well, and their own communities as well.
So you're saying there's, if that person provides documentation that they've been in San Jose a long time, then that would enable them?
Yeah, anyone, for instance, who's living in a home will have, you know, may have, for instance, city garbage service. And if they're paying for that, there will be a city record reflecting that.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you for the clarification.
Councilmember Camus.
Yeah, I just had a kind of porno order question. I, I was told that I couldn't, we couldn't vote on a, on the item 3DII to change the wording on the AB5 to just oppose it because it wasn't on the agenda. But the memo is on the agenda, and I'm wondering, you know, it's on the agenda, we are discussing it, can we just vote on it?
You can direct staff to come back next week or at a future meeting to agendize it to take a position, but because the agenda itself does not have a, the purpose of the agenda, the public agenda is to put the public on notice that the council is going to take a proposed action. And so you would have to notify the public that you're recommending the city take an action on this legislation. So you can ask, the council could tell us, come back next week with a, a position on it.
So we could put it, basically saying, put it through the rules convenio.
That's, that's the way to do it.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Colorado.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, you said that, that you'd want to be speaking as a lawyer, but as a fellow lawyer, I think it's a permanent affliction if we have no choice. Everything we do has that filter. And I appreciate your comments, especially regionally, of what San Jose has done. I know with Councilmembers Chu and Liccardo through, beyond A-BAG, we've seen, it's nice to get A-grade sometimes, but not when all of our surrounding cities are getting F's and D's in terms of supplying housing demand and affordable housing and without any repercussions. And so I do agree that we certainly need to work with the other cities in the county so that they can hold up their end of the bargain. But while, while that's true, we still, you know, have a lot of work to do with our own residents and folks here. And I also wanted to, I didn't earlier thank Councilmember Chu for his mention of the VA and domestic violence victims, and I think they count, I think the memo can appropriately address that. And I don't know if it specifically says it, but I imagine staff will have the opportunity to connect or to create a connection with the VA and the domestic violence organizations as we go forward in the months ahead so that there's that. VA is not always very easy to build that kind of communication, that relationship with, but hopefully, if we start now, or whatever's already been done, we can continue to work on that. And, you know, just, I think a comment Councilmember Herrera made regarding the need, we need to have housing that matches our wages, I think more importantly, we need wages that match our housing. And I think that, you know, it's no surprise with 1% of the people in this nation having 24% of the wealth, the 20s, 20%, the 20 wealthiest percent has 80, over 80% of the wealth. I mean, I think that it's a larger conversation, but I think it cannot be separated from what we're discussing here today. And on the last piece, as I discussed at length earlier about the enforcement piece, I'll, you know, although I go back and forth, I'll support the memo because it does say to report it, to allow us, staff to come back after doing, after going through their budget process with the feasibility and cost. And there are some elements I think are okay, but I can certainly express my objection if, during the budget process on some of those specific items. And although I agree that we can have an opportunity to have a court set up for those that do have mental health issues and substance abuse issues, the reality is now more than ever, a lot of people that are homeless are just broke. And, and there's no court that, that can really address that. My fear, I think that I came across, I spoke earlier, is that by putting the stayaway orders and by more aggressively addressing the trespassing, we're going to create criminals, create folks that have criminal records that currently don't. And that just, that just starts to create even a further problem. And so I do hope that in the discussions with the DA's office and so on, that some of those things can be avoided. I know, Councilmember Liccardo, the memo does talk about diversionary programs or other types of programs, but those are all cost enormous amount of money. So we have to make sure that those discussions are thorough, and I'm sure they will be with our district attorney's office.
Councilmember Herrera.
I just want to clarify that I certainly am very supportive of getting more jobs with higher incomes, which was my point, but there are folks that are on fixed incomes. And they aren't going to be, they may be living with that income, and it's because they're on some kind of fixed income from the government, they're receiving disability, social security. Those are the folks that I'm talking about in terms of trying to find housing because they actually have some kind of income. Some of those folks may have come from another area, and if they do, and if they do want to go back to where they are from, I, I agree with Councilmember Pierre-Louis Oliverio that we should provide the ability for them to do that because perhaps where they came from, that social security check could have, be enough to find housing for them. So the ultimate goal is to get housing. That was, that was my point.
Councilmember Liccardo.
Thank you. I just want to address a couple of concerns that were raised by Councilmember Carter, and I appreciate your support of the memo, and I certainly appreciate and understand your reservations. I think you know from working in the criminal justice system as I have, that right now, we are currently putting people in jail for more or less being homeless. And because they're committing low-level misdemeanor crimes, they would not otherwise be committing if they had a roof over their head. And as a result, we're, we've got a very expensive strategy dealing with folks who are being incarcerated, and it costs us tens of thousands of dollars a year to keep that system going. The, the point here is, can we come up with a more rational, coordinated system? And I think that's important. And it needs to be in conjunction with a basic notion that we're going to try to find a place for, for folks to go. We're going to do everything we can to find resources to do that. But we also have to accept the fact that where homelessness and where encampments often exist, most prevalently in our city, are in neighborhoods that are already most severely impacted by unemployment, by the challenges of poverty. And, you know, it's, for the most part, I think in the wealthier parts of our city, we don't have problems with feeding in parks. But I know we have those challenges in a lot of communities, like the community I represent. And I can tell you, we get calls every single day about the impacts, and they're not from the wealthy residents. It's from the residents who are struggling the most, who are concerned about the safety of their kids, recognizing there are public safety issues with encampments and so forth. So I think we've got to be sensitive to the reality that our residents are very much frustrated. And what we need is a rational response to that frustration, not just a reaction. And that's what I'm suggesting that we embark on through this process in collaboration with the courts and probation and the DA's office. And I think the DA's office has expressed very clearly at different levels that they are interested in something other than a lock them up strategy. And with regard to the food, you know, we already have a park regulation that prohibits the public feeding in parks, and it's for good reason. There are neighborhoods that regard the park as their front yard. And I'm thinking, for instance, of St. James, where we have residents who live right there on the park. And, you know, what they often express to people who come in from suburban communities into the downtown, the park is, hey, they're not feeding on your front door. They're feeding on our front door. And we all, if we're going to solve this, let's solve it together, but let's not decide that the problem and the challenges of the problem should always be in the hardest hit parts, parts of the city. And so I think we just need a balanced approach, and obviously, it's going to take a lot of resources to get there. And, and I think we can get there if we're working together.
I think we are finally there, meaning the end of this discussion. Time for a vote. It's going to be a long time till we get to the other there that Councilmember Liccardo was referring to, but at least we've gotten somewhere here this afternoon. We have a motion on the floor with three friendly amendments that we've discussed earlier. On that motion, all in favor, opposed, I count none opposed. Motion carries just the beginning of the work. Staff, thank you very much for getting us here with a lot of work. And we are not done with this afternoon's agenda. Item 4.3 is the next thing we'll take up. That's actions related to amending our sign code, Title 23 of the zoning ordinance, I believe. Joe Borbordell's here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are several items that we are bringing forward to the council today. One is related to high-rise buildings in the downtown to recognize the new styles of buildings that we're seeing and how signage best fits those. The second and third items relate to programmable signs for gas stations and parking garages, again, keeping up where the technology's been heading and recognizing those unique character of those facilities. And then we are making some technical changes. We are falling right behind this ordinance with the community meeting later this month, and ordinance is coming in April related to large commercial shopping centers on signage and working through some issues that we couldn't quite finish in time for today's ordinance. We didn't want to hold that, this ordinance up, so we're bringing it in a couple of pieces.
We do have some requests from the public to speak. Vice Mayor, when did you have something first? We'll take the public testimony. Bob Keefe and David Wall.
I have a brief statement, and that is that I support Councilman Wynn's recommendation. To stimulate commerce, especially in our downtown, we should To stimulate commerce, especially in our downtown, we should recognize that signage is a necessary ingredient of commerce. So we should be positive. We should declare that we want to encourage signage. New York City and the wide area around Times Square doesn't just encourage signage, it requires signage. An ordinance that's now many years old requires contractors to present designs for signage that cover a part of the sides of those buildings for which construction permits are being sought. We don't have to match New York's approach, but we should be clear in declaring that we intend to do more than occasionally liberalizing our sign code. We should adopt a city policy whereby we encourage signage in commercial areas, that we perhaps even require minimum standards of signage in those areas. Thank you.
David Wall?
I'd like to thank the previous...
I'm still working on a one-minute rule for the rest of the afternoon, so you'll know.
But I would also like to thank Director Hordel for this horrible job he's had to put up with. My only comment is that I have yet to see that the conversion of existing billboards to electronic billboards. And I haven't seen that as far as an amendment, and I think that the city should go in that direction. Thank you.
That concludes public testimony. Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Thank you, Mayor. And I wanted to thank Mr. Keefe for coming down here and waiting for almost four hours to speak on this issue. And just from hearing his voice, I know he's ill, so thank you so much for being here. For those who don't know Mr. Keefe, he doesn't really like signs in our city. I wanted to put a motion on the floor and just speak briefly to the motion, and that is to approve the memorandum dated March 8, 2013, by Councilmember Constance and myself.
Right. You have a motion on the floor?
First of all, I wanted to thank staff for bringing this forward. You've been working with the business owners in the community in regards to some of the amendments that you bring forward today. The intent of my memo is to encourage that kind of collaborations with the business community. We all know that businesses in every part of the city have a sign code pertaining to them. For example, we have several sign zone or designations in our city, including the downtown, the Neighborhood Business District, Capital Expressway, Auto Mall, the El Port, San Pedro Square, Stevens Creek Boulevard, and the Oak Ridge Blossom Hill Urban Village. And all these different sign districts have different requirements in terms of signage. And so the intent of my memo is to give staff the flexibility to come up with a minimum requirement for brightness and size, for permanent storefront signage within these areas for new businesses and also for businesses that are ready to expand. And so essentially, what I wanted to see is more vibrancy in these commerce areas. And by doing so, we can encourage more commerce, we can encourage tourists and also residents to come to these areas. At the end of the day, what I would like to see, as Mr. Keefe pointed out, is that the city of San Jose encourage more signage rather than reduce restrictions. And so I hope that my colleague will support this memo. Thank you.
Counselor Herrera?
Thank you, and thank you, Vice Mayor. I support this, I'd be voting yes on this. Just had a quick question for Joe. So, Joe, the village signage, when do we expect that to come back?
The sign concept for, at the Evergreen Village Center, is waiting for the artist to finish their project of the public art along Ruby and Aborn.
Aborn.
And so from that, then, we would come back with some language in the code to reflect that as a community identification sign. So that's really what we're waiting for at this moment.
So will that be then the first, will that be the signage that then will apply to other villages?
Well, we're looking at the concept of structurally how we would build that and then use that to replicate as we do the other areas across the city of these, as we're building our urban villages and the commercial areas in that, to see how to create kind of that district-wide type signage.
Great. And when do you, when do you need this to come back? When is your deadline? When are you looking at needing to bring this back to council?
We're really working with the artist on the main piece of it, so Chappelle has not brought back anything to us to see because they're responsible for that portion of the sign.
Okay. I'm trying, I'm trying to sort of get a deadline on the thing.
Yeah.
So by April or by...
Staff really doesn't have control over that one. It's really as fast as they bring something in that then we can start with it.
Okay. So you don't have an end date in mind when you're thinking about wrapping up the sign code?
In some ways, I think it's just like the zoning code. We're continuing to go through and make changes to it. That is, we work through some of our exercises right now out in, like, we're working on the Alameda and Stevens Creek. As we work through the land use issues there, it's identifying some ideas that we should fix, both in the zoning code and sign code. So we just keep bringing those back on an iterative basis and keep making progress.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Counselor Liccardo?
Thank you, Mayor. And so it's a pleasure to see Mr. Keefe, although I'm not startled by his advocacy. It certainly is consistent, and we appreciate that. Just a quick question about what we're doing more generally on sign code revisions, because I know this is starting to feel like we're painting the Golden Gate Bridge, and we're going to keep painting. I very much support the intent of Vice Mayor Nguyen's memo and would love to see it happen. I imagine it's going to require some outreach with business community about at what point does a minimum requirement become burdensome and prevent them from getting going at a time when we know the businesses are very low on cash? And so I imagine it's a bit of a tight rope we have to walk, and I'm just wondering how you might be likely to implement that.
That was my comment to Mr. Keefe as we walked in this afternoon, was it's really the tight rope of how to go and, what we've done is build a sign code that allows great signage to happen, so like the cha-cha sign mentioned in the memo, great sign. It's an expensive sign. So really, the challenge is to go and work with the business community of what, how much money realistically a small business can afford to spend. And then, I think partly is to see, are there some things that we need to do that help when they're designing it, working with the sign companies about, here's the things we're really interested in? Put your emphasis in these areas as opposed to spending your dollars in other areas? So there is some outreach around that. So it's one that, you know, while those talks about returning back in 30 days, I think in 30 days, we're going to say, as we acknowledge we have this assignment, we're not going to be going off and having really figured this out in 30 days. Because we're off working on another project, so my calendar kind of is out later. We'll start doing that outreach as we start talking, doing the community meetings in that, to introduce the concept and understand it. But at the end of the day, I would be concerned about a requirement that mandates a city-wide, you know, in these retail areas, that kind of brightness standard. Because I think you're just going to get really white signs that are bright. They won't be more readable, they won't add vibrancy, but they'll be bright. So that's, I think we just need to kind of work our way into it.
Okay. And I know that we'll, obviously, you'll employ whatever discretion you needed to employ. So I certainly support the direction. I guess I would, I would suggest, in a perfect world, with lots of money in the budget, we'd be thinking about, for instance, waiving fees or reducing fees if we got a sign of a particular size or greater. And maybe that might be one way to provide a nice incentive for a small business, but I recognize it's a budget issue. But I just throw that out there as one consideration of many, if, in fact, you win the lottery in the next month or two. Joe, thank you.
Counselor Rocha?
Thank you, Mayor. I know we've got three members from the Rules Committee here, and I know they're very particular about process. I'm curious how this wasn't suggested to go through the priority setting process?
It might.
Okay. Based upon, well, that's what I was thinking, based upon what Joe just mentioned, it seems like that might be the most appropriate place.
The memo has come back to rules for status report, and it kind of depends on, is this a big one or a little one? How does it fit into the zoning...
So the status is, is this a big or a little one?
Yeah, that's really the question.
We can't answer that right now?
Well, I think part of it, to the extent that the, I think as Mr. Keefe noted, a policy by the city to say, we encourage this, and that's how, really, I read the memo, that is probably pretty minimal brain damage and staff time involved, to the extent that it is regulatory and insisting on types of signs, brightness of signs, quality signs, numbers of signs, that, I think, has got a much heavier workload, because it's got a lot more outreach tied to it, because there's consequence to not, to a business to not achieving that. So that's, partly, I need to go through and spend some time and unpack it a bit and kind of talk it through with my staff. And that's, so I think we can come to rules and say, here's kind of a couple of choices, level of effort. Here's what we can do today, and here's what, you know, if it gets prioritized, we could do more with.
So then it goes back to rules, and they say it's big or little. What is rules going to do with it? Add it to the study, or the priority setting? Or you're going to say, go ahead and do it? So the full council will never have that opportunity to weigh in on whether or not we think it's a priority, or we want staff to proceed, or I want a mandate that folks have signs?
I can't always predict what the Rules Committee will do, but I would anticipate that, trying to be consistent, that if it's a significant undertaking, it would go into the priority setting process for the August timeframe, is next time we look at ordinance amendments.
And if it's a little one, then the Rules Committee will decide whether or not we're going to proceed as a city on this? So is my opportunity to say whether or not I agree with this now? Or do I have to show up at rules and...
No, because...
Not that it's not a great place to spend my afternoon.
Let's say, let's say it's a minor amendment, you just got to change a word in the, in the ordinance, and you say, okay, we could do that. It still comes back to the council, I think.
Okay.
With the ordinance amendment. So ultimately, that's the final word.
Just wondering how you saw this plan out. So thank you.
Counselor Oliverio?
Thanks, Mayor. Joe, it seems like I've been voting on the sign ordinance for approximately five years. So I perceived that at some point, either before I got on the council or as I just got on the council, we said, here's a sign ordinance, it's really big, work on it as you have time, and bring things forward. So I just wanted to, because Councilmember Rocha brings up a point, but then it just seems like you've been doing it as staff has been able to do it, and I would just make the assumption that it's probably going to be on the agenda every three months.
That's the strategy we've taken with the zoning code, is we just put on every three months kind of the bucket, and we put things into it just to move things forward. And I think from a sign code, some more, small cleanup things, we can do that. It's the bigger policy outreach parts that really, I think, do belong in the priority setting. So, you know, as we talk about, you know, putting minimum sign standards, that's a big policy kind of shift.
And then, as far as the, all the changes we've made, you've been here since the beginning on this topic. You know, there was probably a wish list or a desired outcome from the council, depending on who was on the council at the time. Have we achieved 50% of what we wanted to do, or...
I think the biggest one that we haven't finished up is dealing with advertising in the public right of way to deal with an outstanding council referral on, is that a source of revenue? And so it started with news racks. So that's the one that we're spending time on right now, thinking, really thinking through the consequences of that type of ordinance. And that's taking a big time in the attorney's office and in my shop and in transportation public works.
And does news rack consolidation fit within the sign code, or is that something separate?
It does, because it regulates signage in the public right of way, which affects our current regulations on billboards and campaign signs. Those all nest together.
And then, to be clear, on business districts that have a desire of getting rid of the 20 random bins, I forget the proper term, and making one nice thing that they would pay for, that's part of the sign code?
To the extent that we're using advertising to pay for that, then it is part of the sign code. To the extent that they just wanted to buy them, we can do that today through our encroachment permit process.
I just want to clarify, since you're here. I thought we had to have a separate ordinance to allow that to happen, to the consolidation of news racks into something you'd see in Palo Alto or Santana Row?
We already have news rack ordinance that, in many cases, news racks are already violating. It's just, it's an enforcement priority, and there isn't specific complaints on it.
Okay. Thank you.
Right. We have a motion on the floor. Vice Mayor Nguyen, on that motion, all in favor. Opposed? None opposed. Motion carries. Item 8.1 is our next item, emergency corrections of the Federal Assistant Forfeiture Fund. We have a motion to approve. Counselor Oliverio?
Rick, just a quick question. Is this something we're trying to do right of way so we don't lose $76,000?
Yeah, it's time-sensitive, and that's why, as part of orders of the day, you had to make the finding.
Right.
And it was adopted.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Right. On the motion to approve the recommendation, all in favor. Opposed? None opposed. Motion carries. Our last item of business is 3.5, a resolution in support of immigration reform, which we have noticed to be heard not earlier than 2:30. We successfully got past 2:30 a few hours ago. We were, I guess, overly optimistic at Rules Committee. We thought we might be getting close around 2:30. But I guess that's just a guess. From time to time, it's how long some things will take. You never know how long the council might wish to speak. So we do have some people here to speak, but I'm going to call on Councilmember Campos first.
Thank you, Mayor. We can go ahead and hear them speak first.
Okay. Let's take some public testimony, and then we'll come back for council action. Please come on down. We've got room in the front. The whole front row is open, plenty of room. When I call your name, please come down. Jeff Padola, David Wall, Maria Fernandez.
Hi. I'd rather be in rules. This is what I was going to say in open forum before this went back to rules. At the Rules Meeting, I heard the discussion on this. I noticed some talks were very fluid, while others seemed contrived, as if the thoughts of others. Children demand what they want. Adults look out for what might be best for all. Our position, I mean, excuse me, the only way to get a sensible policy on immigration is by conferring before issues are steered through with pressure. Our position should be informed by the best integration of facts we're able to get. I'm not sure it was really kosher how this issue got here. Thank you.
David Wall, Maria Fernandez.
Sir, this is for lawyers. Volume eight of United States Code's annotated section 1324, the bringing in and harboring certain aliens. Question I have been raising is as follows. Can San Jose council members, through their ministerial acts, by ordering the San Jose Police Department not to inform Immigration and Customs Enforcement when SJPD has a known illegal alien in custody, satisfy the felonious conduct of shielding an illegal alien from detection and also harboring that illegal alien? Thank you. It should be included in the immigration packet.
Maria Fernandez, Jasmine Segura, Dennis Raj.
Good afternoon again. My name is Maria Noel Fernandez from Working Partnerships USA. Today, you have an opportunity to represent thousands of your constituents by supporting this resolution. The reality is, we know some may attempt to hide behind the veil of process, the veil of not wanting to weigh in on a, quote, "federal issue," or even that it's not part of your legislative priorities. But today, it will be clear who stands on the side of justice, who believes that our immigration system is broken and must be repaired, and who will listen to the vast majority of Americans who believe in immigration reform. Reform is not just something you leave to our congressional reps. It's a local issue. It's about your neighbor, it's about your child's friend, or someone who you know that lives in fear. While individual advocacy efforts from council members and the mayor are appreciated, your collective voice on this issue is needed. I urge you to strengthen this resolution and include a pathway to citizenship for people in good standing, reducing the unreasonable wait times and protections for all workers. San Jose has the opportunity to again lead on a critical issue to set the tone and guide legislation being drafted in Congress. Thank you for your support.
Jasmine Segura, Dennis Raj, Pearl Flores.
Good afternoon. My name is Jasmine Segura. I'm federal policy advocate at Cyren. I'm here also to support the resolution. Immigrants in Silicon Valley start businesses and are at the forefront of groundbreaking innovation and contribute every day to our thriving economy. In California alone, immigrants comprise more than one-third of the workforce and contribute more than $30 billion annually. As San Jose, one of the 10th largest cities in the nation, I think it's important that as city council, we take a strong stance in support of our immigrant community. Last week, we were in Sacramento, and our members of the... Last week, we were in Sacramento and our members of Congress, our members of the state legislature also took a strong stance and supported immigration reform. They were, you know, they sent off a bus tour that went all over California. So I think as San Jose state, we have the responsibility and we have the opportunity to have a say in our national debate around immigration reform. And so I urge the city council to support comprehensive immigration reform with a pathway to citizenship for the immigrant community. Thank you.
Dennis Raj, Purla Flores, Fred Hirsch.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Dennis Raj. I'm the political director for the South Bay AFL-CIO Labor Council. The Labor Council represents 88 affiliated unions with 100,000 members in Silicon Valley. On behalf of our affiliated unions and their members, I urge you to take action on this important issue. Reforming our broken immigration system isn't just important for labor, it's an issue that transcends political and economic divisions, that creates a coalition of diverse forces with the goal to make our immigration system work. As a son of an immigrant, I can remember distinctly the day my father became a U.S. citizen. He's an engineer at one of the local high-tech companies. And at the time, I was just excited to take the day off of school and attend the swearing-in ceremony. But looking back, I can see the importance of my father's naturalization to our family and to the economy because he was one of the thousands of employees that moved the high-tech economy here. My dad's citizenship opened up doors that were previously closed. And on the day he cast a vote in his first U.S. election, I could see the pride positively beaming from his smile. I hope that everyone who has an undocumented member of their family gets to have the same experience. It's critical for San Jose to stand up on this issue because we represent incredible diversity.
Sorry, your time is up.
I appreciate it.
Purla Flores, Fred Hirsch, Ross Signorino.
Good afternoon, council members. If we don't fix the broken immigration system this year, immigrants, the economy, all of us, will languish without the equal rights mandated by the Constitution and the pledge we take every day about liberty and justice for all. We'll languish for another 25 years. The fine resolution before you could be strengthened by demanding diligent and equal enforcement of labor laws and workplace standards and eradicating the so-called guest worker programs, which hold workers, in the words of the Southern Poverty Law Center, in conditions close to slavery. Such a program, the Bersero Program, was fought against and defeated by our San Jose icons, Ernesto Galasa and Cesar Chavez. Please let Congress know that San Jose wants immigration reform with a clear path to citizenship, family unification, and equal rights and protections for all workers. And this will boost the economy, not only of the nation, but the city, and end the outrageous exploitation against so many new immigrants and raise the quality of life for us all. Thank you.
Ross Signorino, Samina Usman, Pam Godino.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, I appreciate that second paragraph that you have in the memorandum regarding this subject. We are the capital of Silicon Valley and rich with immigrants in this city. That's great. And immigrants is what made this country, so we should not turn them away. But nonetheless, there's something else more involved here. We can't go, we cannot split families up. That's important, that we hold families together. Immigrants that are here illegally right now, they have no documentation, it wasn't their fault, they came over here as children. What do we do with them? We have to get them in line and make them citizens and make them more worthy citizens of this country. Thank you.
Samina Usman, Pam Godino, Lauren Jacobs, Johnny Lee, Joe Kenny. Anybody else want to speak? Now's the time. If you want to speak, come on down. I called everybody left in the room.
Good afternoon, I'm Pam Godino and I'm here on behalf of the Board of Directors and Staff of Solmos Mayfair and the 20,000 residents of the Mayfair community of San Jose City Council District Five. And we encourage you to adopt the proposed resolution co-authored by council members Campus and Rocha in support of comprehensive immigration reform. In Mayfair, like many other neighborhoods, immigration status of thousands of residents is the single biggest driver of poverty and crisis. Without the possibility of legal residence and a path to citizenship, thousands of Mayfair residents are relegated to lives in which poverty is an inescapable condition. In turn, as countless studies have demonstrated, high rates of poverty are directly correlated with high rates of student dropouts, violence in homes and streets, and overcrowding of neighborhoods. The consequences of intergenerational poverty are felt most acutely at the neighborhood level, and today the city of San Jose is overburdened with too many neighborhoods in crisis. Action by the San Jose City Council can add a great deal to the growing course for comprehensive immigration reform. As our elected leaders, we trust that regardless of whatever personal position you hold on the question of immigration reform, the most appropriate step is to urge Congress to pass comprehensive immigration reform legislation. Thank you.
Lauren Jacobs, Joe Kenny.
My name is Lauren Jacobs. I'm First Vice President of SCIU, United Service Workers West, a union of 40,000 property service workers, close to 4,000 who live here in San Jose. Our nation cannot wait for this system to be healed. Our communities can no longer wait. This system, the current immigration system, is broken. Families have been ripped apart, communities have been ripped apart by this. We have an opportunity before us to act in a way that is really consistent with the most fundamental of American values, that all men and women are created equal. And right now, our current system does not reflect those values. I really strongly urge this council to take bold, quick, and brave action, to call on our members of Congress to act now. When there's more unity between business, labor, and community to make this happen, this is the moment. And I ask you to vote in support of this resolution with the amendments that include a pathway to citizenship, that families be unified on a much faster basis.
Sorry, your time is up.
And that there's protections for all workers, regardless of immigration status. Thank you.
Joe Kenny.
Well, good evening. My name's Joe Kenny. I'm from the South Bay Pride at Work. And I can say without a doubt that unless your family is Native American, all of our families came here as immigrants. Some of us came here on boats and planes, some walked across deserts, but they all came here for different reasons, mostly to have a life that was better than the life that they were leaving. I know that you want to be leaders in this issue. And I know that San Jose speaks really loudly in Washington because we represent such a large immigrant community. Please listen to what everyone had to say today. We've waited a really long time to talk. We hope that you'll take a decisive action and quickly pass this. Send it to Congresswoman Zoe Lofgren so she can represent the reality of who Silicon Valley really is. Thank you.
That concludes the public testimony on this item. Councilmember Campos.
Thank you, Mayor. I know we've been here for a while, so I'll make this brief. Councilmember Rocha and I put together a memo based on the loud, the loud requests and concerns that our community here in Silicon Valley has been, has been sharing with us. Congress is acting on this as we speak. This is something that, as a city, the 10th largest in the nation, with a new immigrant or a new American population that is, that is closing in on 50%, if not more, we owe it to the folks that, that work in this valley, that make this valley great, to, to stand with them and send a recommendation to the 113th Congress to create comprehensive immigration reform. So with that, I ask my council colleagues to support the recommendation that Councilmember Rocha and myself put forward. And there, the, the resolution is attached to the recommendation. Thank you.
Take that as a motion. Is there a second? We have a second. All right, on the, we have a motion on the floor. Councilmember Colra.
Thank you. I'll be uncharacteristically brief. I, I'm definitely in support of the motion as a no-brainer for our city. Over 40% foreign-born, including myself, almost two-thirds, one generation removed from, from, from a parent born in another country. And this is the first time in a very long time, mostly because of the political environment in Washington, D.C., that something's going to be done in regards to comprehensive immigration reform. And it's going to be done very soon. And so the, we need to get this in now as hearings are beginning in the short term and hopefully progress in the relatively short term as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Camus.
Well, as an immigrant, first generation, I'm very supportive of immigration reform. I've been immigration reform advocate for many, many years. I have been a big supporter of the Dream Act and reuniting families. I, I also, you know, in, in, in looking at your memo, I wanted to point out that, you know, we, we also have a great, you know, secondary, you know, student, when they, when they go to college here from, from countries overseas, I think we should be offering them visas, work visas, and the opportunity to become citizens here because we want to, you know, we're, we're educating these folks, want to keep them in the country. And I was hoping that you can add that to your, to your, your memo. In fact, when we were looking it over, we started getting memos from the Chamber of Commerce supporting that, you know, especially the people who are graduating from, with STEM degrees and what have you.
I believe it's in the, the resolution, but if it's not, I will accept that amendment.
Okay. I, I read it over and I, maybe, maybe I glossed over it or something, but...
There's a discussion of it in the middle of the, of the whereas's.
Yes.
It's not specific, called out in, at the bottom, though.
Yeah. I mean, I highlighted it where it started looking at, talking about it, but I was hoping to make it, make it more clear that we want to provide, you know, visas for people who earn a graduate degree from, from a university in the United States. I also want to make sure that...
Let me just, let me just clarify that. So that's a friendly amendment, just to add the language at the bottom to...
That, that's acceptable.
Draw attention to that. Okay, with a second or...
That's acceptable.
All right, so we have a friendly amendment. Councilmember Camus.
I also wanted to ensure that immigrants who are playing by the rules, you know, get to the front of the line. There are a lot of immigrants, my family included, who are waiting patiently to be part of the immigrant, to be, to be immigrants to the United States. And I'm hoping that they actually get, you know, some, some, get to the front of the line, if you will. I'm, I'm, I think people who have tried to go through the, the long, very long illegal process need to be rewarded for their patience and for their commitment to wanting to be in the country. I don't know how you put that into words, but I'd like to see that the Congress addressed that issue and, and for us to, you know, use criminal records to make sure that we don't import any, any people who could do us harm as well. So I, I want to make sure that...
If I may, we try to be a little, little bit less prescriptive. I mean, my assumption is that Congress is going to deal with that more specific issues and we try to just have some general guiding principles around immigration reform and not get into the weeds too much than we might have opened ourselves up to, a lot of different opinions up here, which we still may, but that was the intent. And not that I disagree with anything you just said, I just didn't want to get too prescriptive, so to speak.
Well, I just figured since we're, we're out here to discuss the subject and, and I don't know if it's, you know, I wouldn't think this is the normal purview of our, of our city to begin with, but since we're on the subject, I, I was hoping to get, to get these in the memo so that, you know, we can encompass a little more, that's all. I, I, I'm very supportive of it, as I said. And I think that we do need to let Congress know that we are concerned about potential criminals coming over our border. And we are, you know, and I'm hoping to see, you know, since we're advising them to begin with, let's, let's advise them with some of these ideas as well, is all I'm hoping.
Do you have a statement, a clear statement that you have in mind so I get a sense of exactly what you're suggesting?
So my first statement would be to ensure, ensure the continued export or, or continued vigilance and not allowing criminals to enter our population would be one. And then the other one would be to ensure immigrants who are in line, if you will, to get to the front of the line.
So the first, the, the last request, you know, I accepted that friendly amendment. I, I agree with Councilmember Rocha, you know, the intent was not to get too much into the weeds or the clouds and, and send a general, general direction to Congress as to the sentiment with, with San Jose, Silicon Valley. You know, we have such a diverse population and new American community that I believe a number of the things that you had requested were part of the president's speech. And I rest assure you that, that those are going to be some of the issues that are going to be discussed. I, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe the, the Department of Homeland Security has a whole program designed to keep folks out of this country that want to bring harm to this nation. So I, I, I think on that end, that's being addressed. And so I'll, I'll accept the first or that, that second part of your, your request as I did before, but I, I would rather keep it, you know, not as, not as detailed as what you just described right now. So thank you.
Councilmember Rocha, there was, okay, occurrence on, on that. So that's another friendly amendment. So it's two friendly amendments, I believe, the first one that you previously discussed and then one of the two on this one.
It was, it was the same.
Okay.
Yeah, it was the same one, the front of the line.
There's only one, only one friendly amendment, the first one.
Yes, yes, the front, yeah, the front of the line.
Okay.
Yes, 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 you're right. The education friendly amendment is...
We have the focus on the, the education and then the front-of-the-line amendment.
Yes, 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 yes.
Those two, accepted by friendly amendment.
Thank you.
Right, Councilmember Herr.
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to thank my colleagues for bringing this forward and thank the folks that came to testify for their patience in waiting for this issue. It's very important and I'm proud and happy today to be able to vote for this. I'm a longtime supporter of immigration reform, have participated in the marches over the years along Santa Clara Street and come from a family of immigrants, both longtime immigrants and more recent immigrants. So I think it's, I think this is very, very important and it's heartening to see that it's actually possible, that we've got bipartisan support in Congress and it's that moment in time where this can really happen. And so I think we do need to seize the moment and I'm glad, we're glad we're moving this forward. I'm appreciative of Councilmember Camus's addition to support increasing the availability of temporary skilled H1B visas to increase a permanent resident visa, green cards for STEM graduates and workers. I think that is, is really important and our high-tech community's been asking for this for a while. And, you know, as a single item, I, I think it's much, it's much better not to have it as part of this comprehensive immigration package. And so I, I'm, I'm happy that you guys have accepted that as a friendly amendment. And again, really glad that we are, are taking a position on this as a city as diverse as San Jose. I think our weighing in is appropriate and will lend a strong voice to what's going, already going on in Congress. So expect this will pass and happy we're doing this.
Councilmember Licardo.
Just wanted to thank my colleagues for bringing this forward and I wanted to prove that can be more brief than us.
Councilmember Oliverio.
Thank you, Mayor Reed. I actually want to compliment the zeal and passion of my colleagues who brought this memo forward. I know you care adamantly about this federal issue and coincidentally, I think we agree more on federal issues than maybe the local issues. And then I, as others express, support immigration reform, not because I'm the son of immigrant parents, but because of the variety of topics that surface in the immigration debate, whether it's technology, agriculture, and people who lived here lawfully for years for the path of citizenship. I think we'll get there, we'll get there in some way. We don't have a bill yet, but we have a good advocate in Congressmember Zoe Lofgren. But I want to say that I see, do see my role as differently as a council member and does not mean that how I view my role, your role, needs to be vociferous. It just means that we each have the right to do what we feel is best. And back in 2008, I wrote about my views that I'd only support items on the council that really deal with the city. And as much as I may agree with any of the items, I'm not inclined to support those because I think it takes away from our, our job at hand, whether it's, you know, working on our law enforcement or paving roads. And so, but I do appreciate my colleagues' passion for the item, but I'll be registering a no vote just because of any item that comes before me and that's out of this topic, I will not be supporting. I do want to mention, though, back when I recent, when I started on the council, we did vote to support the amicus brief at the state level. And then when that was brought back to council, I voted to support that, being consistent. And that was what we did a couple of months ago. Thank you.
I think that concludes the discussion. I think that concludes the discussion. We have a motion with a couple of friendly amendments. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I have one opposed, Councilmember Oliverio, with a couple council members absent, but it's enough to carry the day. Motion is approved.
Who else is absent?
The last item on my agenda would be open forum.
What happened to you?
David Wall.
Of all my years of coming to council meetings, I'd have to say this one today has to be the most disgusting chain of events I've ever witnessed. I have, I'm just thoroughly disgusted with what I heard and saw today. However, there is one good thing that ends the day. Our city attorney has returned to us. When I heard of his travel plans, I was very fearful that he'd get eaten by a wild beast or end up in a cannibal stew pot. But he is back in our midst, and we can all rejoice at that. Thank you.
Ross Signorino.
Ariane, yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, I've been coming to these meetings, council meetings, for years, the old City Hall and the new City Hall, and it's the first time that I ever heard that councilmen want to be brief. I hope the trend long continues. One of the things I want to mention here, I see some graffiti goes going over our highways, is just incredible to me how they can get up there, like this one here on 280, coming in this direction, has got Tommy or something. How do they get the time to do that? How do they? I don't understand it. No one sees them in any way. You know, that takes a lot of money to take and paint that all off, and I'm just wondering, wouldn't that be, instead of just spending the money to take that off, wouldn't it be good if we can invest in cameras and put them there? Because they seem to go back to the same spot all over, over and over. And then, as I come here, for meetings, of course, and I'm going to try to be brief, I hope, oh, it looks like I'm over here.
Your time is up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the brevity.
That concludes the open forum. Concludes our meeting. Return.